They would say cheese. Gotta get us, a lot of staff, gotta get up from the floor. A lot of walking. I'm not that dedicated to picture. Maybe at the end.
Just don't like the setup. Trying to figure out how to change it, but um. It doesn't feel good not seeing these people behind us. Can't we be that way?
I don't disagree.
The people behind you, Mayor, or support staff, when they need to talk to you, they're gonna come forward and sit in the open seats.
I'm just saying, I feel ugly. Okay. Welcome to tonight's study session. It's September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, welcome to the Westminster City Council Study Session for September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We thank you for coming. I would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted at the back of the room. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session, as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all that there's an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting, and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited, and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided not in aisles, nor shall the doors be blocked. City Managers Report.
Or did you want to go to City Council Reports at all?
This first. I don't see us, but you can go first without catching them.
Okay, uh, so Mayor, the um, the only thing I wanted to mention, and I did not do a presentation since we've got heavy presentation this evening, is uh, just a uh, an update for, the council saw this on Friday with the uh, the Cal update, but uh, for um, the staff that are uh, in the room, any members of the public that are here and um, watching online. Uh, the city, city's underwriters and financial advisors received a final pricing of the city's certificates of participation, which are called COPS, at four point three two nine percent, which is significantly lower than the city council's authorized interest rate of five point two five percent for lower. The lower rate will reduce the annual debt service and save residents approximately two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars each year on um, the uh, the COPS that we're taking out in order to construct our new municipal court. And so that's a huge win for the city at that uh, interest rate, and a huge win for our residents as we build a new municipal court. So I just wanted to share that with everybody. That's all I have to say.
Nice tunes. Um, Council Reports, Council Isadi.
I'm here.
Council Nammella. I have a team.
A couple of things that, just to share again, I know this made its way around the council. Um, the CNR, Rocky Mountain Airport was notified today that one of our members, because a council member from Lafayette, Tonya Briggs, had passed away over the weekend, um, so I know that staff prepared something for us to send her family. Um, so keep that in mind, her prayers and thoughts. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up, so um, a handful of us attended the CASA event on Wednesday, which was a great event, really enjoyed it. Um, I think they did really well in supporting and raising money for their cause. Um, but that kept me from being able to attend inclusivity board, and I did get a note from uh, the staff liaison that they had to ask, and so they have an eight thousand dollar budget that they have to do different things around inclusiveness in the community. And they only spent a thousand of it today, and they had approved a motion that has to go through us still uh, for three thousand of those dollars in order to buy some electronic translators. I think that they're gonna be buying three of them if I understood right. Um, so I wanted to see if all would support them in spending those three thousand dollars out of their budget.
What are the translators for?
Um, they're gonna use them for different community events.
Oh, for them when they have.
Well, I think, what was that?
Artifacts that.
The art.
Artifacts with the local uh, you know, history, history of people who are from the community and they worked with three local residents to put together exhibits specific to a number of different groups who put in for a long time. There's still working on things that comes up.
They'd be able, but they're buying us, they'd have like views beyond that as well, but that's the initial. That's for a fourth.
Do we see a need for it in the future? Um, this one time. Have we not been able to pass? Usually there's one spoken. And so we, for town halls, we usually have Spanish uh, translation or interpretation services. They come in, we contract those services. Because citizens are smaller and they're sort of moving around, it gives the people who are uh, leading the exhibit an opportunity to speak in their native language and be translated. Uh, so it's sort of a unique opportunity, but the suspects that there will be more of those opportunities coming past the program works. And then they would also be available for other community events, for other council outreach, and that sort of thing, your own devices as opposed to contracting out that specific. So other language, accessible, to these devices? Uh, just speak and then translate English, so, yes. And then who would be responsible for handling? Um, either the community outreach team or the special events and cultural awareness team. Would they need to attend in order to hold these devices? They, they were generally there scouting the people. Okay, thank you. We're good. Elsor Baker? Wait, anything else?
Um, other than just attending indulge for CASA, a great event for a great cause, obviously unbiased, but uh, but yeah, it was great.
Elsor Baker?
Um, I had uh, Northwest May- Mayors and Commissioners last week, and um, huh, so much going on with the two rail pieces, and so stay tuned. The the one that's going from Fort Collins to Pueblo and Front Range Rail um, is about a year ahead of any of the other rail systems in the country, so I really think they have a good shot at getting uh into that program and getting some money to start working on. The big question is, when do they go to voters? Um, if they're ready in two thousand twenty-four, they will, but most think it might be two thousand twenty-six, so um, it was talking about that piece and then the peak-to-peak that RTD's doing. We have a meeting, uh, we've been trying to get um, Ms. Johnson from RTD for the last three months, and I think it's happening either late this week or early next week. We finally get a Zoom meeting with her um, to see what all they're working on with BNSF. Um, and I remind you, the key is Amtrak has rights to the rail. Yes, they have to pay BNSF and all that, but they already can be on that rail. Where RTD and us, working with BNSF, that's so I don't know if the two working in tandem will loosen up BNSF. I guess let's wait to see, but those are the key pieces happening there. Um, Parks, Recs, Library and Open Space, I went to their meeting uh last week, and um, I have lots to tell you, so I will send an email. I haven't, I took the weekend off. Um, Rocky Flat Stewardship Council was today, and I know um, they had like thirty-nine pages of information. They're looking at next year's planning. Um, there's a lot of discussion on that. And um, for our attorney, they will be sending you uh, probably in October, a resolution if we're going to continue being part of that group, because they need to know, and so they just gave the hint up that that would be happening. Yeah, and so um, uh, there was, they talked a lot about their points where they are monitoring, and I know sometimes it's talked about not monitoring, but um, last winter uranium, what, did reach a threshold over the minimum? And then uh, the next check, it did go back down, so a lot of questions about that, what may to come up, what makes it go down? Um, so lots of technical stuff, uh, they seem on top of things, and um, community uh, had a lot of input, uh, and it's either people don't like having the super site used as refuge and people on it, and those that don't care. Um, and either this week or real soon, it's the fortieth anniversary of when they had people encircling the whole place uh, forty years ago, so. That's that. Um, for all others that um, have been on my trek with cancer, I finished radiation today. Um, I've been doing that for ten days and uh, got a mini diploma, some little gifts. Um, but if you see me wiggling in my chair, it's just that the one in my spine, it doesn't hurt, but I know they've worked on it, and so it's just uncomfortable, so. There's nothing else, we will get on to presentations and.
Good evening, Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, anybody who may be watching online, Mayor Pro Town, councilors, um, city staff. Uh, so a couple uh, admin notes before we get going tonight. First of all, the microphones, as a reminder, are ceiling, um, and so they will pick up just about every conversation that might be a sidebar. Um, and so, uh, staff, if you would help us specifically, um, where you're at, we don't want what you're saying back there overriding what the council members may be saying up here, so please take note of that. Um, also, uh, just so that, to make sure that the, the council can hear a response, staff, if you're um, uh, going to be responding to a question or providing uh, pros, cons, et cetera, we would ask you and anybody who may be joining you to come forward to the two open seats up here on my front right. Um, and the purpose for that is so that you're probably counsel by not looking at the back of them, and they don't have to turn around, et cetera, et cetera. It will just flow that much easier, so um, I wanted to point those two things out. We've got a full uh, agenda this evening, if we could go to the next slide. There we go, and so um, we're gonna start out, uh, we've got some introductory comments which y'all make. We'll talk about some changes um, from the August fifth budget retreat that we did in that room, uh, what, six weeks ago or so. Um, we've got uh, the review of the Human Services Board Recommendations. Um, we've got the uh, review of the city council's budget, council sponsorships. Uh, we'll discuss and review some community requests that have come in, and then we'll uh, get to the meat of uh, our conversation um, tonight, which is really amendments to this proposed budget. Um, and you know, as I pointed out um, to staff earlier, and certainly uh, the council understands this, but you know, at the end of the day, projected revenues plus our carryover, minus our operating and capital expenses as proposed in this budget are gonna equal zero. There's no special pot of money out there, it's all about making sure at the end of the day we're at zero. Um, and so what we'll share with you when we talk about those adjustments is, if you wanna add something, you know, what's the counterbalance, what's the takeaway? Cause that's gotta equal zero, the net, it's gotta equal zero, so um, I look forward to that conversation. We've printed the staff so that um, when you all have questions or amendments that you want to make, any uh, amendment would uh, come forward with a uh, a request for an amendment from a counselor, um, a second, and then uh, we bring the staff forward to answer, um, provide any pros and cons, discuss um, what that might mean, uh, and then um, open it up for council discussion, and then decision from the council. Because at the end of the day, this will no longer be the proposed city budget, it will be the city council's budget now going back out to the public um, for their comment on starting here on October ninth, um, and then finalization on October twenty-third, okay? Um, so, next slide if you would. Uh, so uh, we showed this slide before, back on August fifth. Um, we started our process in July of this year with our CU Leeds revenue presentation, and the council um, uh, chose to go with our baseline revenue projection. We could have gone, you know, a um, uh, very favorable, we could have gone baseline, or we could have gone a very conservative, and the council chose to stay right in the middle at that baseline, which this budget, proposed budget, has been prepared against. We did our budget retreat um, in early August, uh, we released that city manager's proposed budget on August thirtieth. Uh, we had our public hearing on the proposed budget uh, last week on September eleventh. Um, one community member uh, spoke to, spoke during the public hearing, um, and here we are on September eighteenth uh, with our uh, council review of that proposed budget. Some things that are coming uh, in the future, again, October ninth would be a public hearing of that budget again. Um, and then uh, the approval of the budget on the uh, October twenty-third. And then, just as I mentioned to the council, we want to do with you all during the study session on October thirtieth will be um, our budget after action review. So um, if there's any part of this process that you want to talk about, um, and uh, make changes for next year, we'll do that. We'll use a SWOT analysis as our mechanism for that after-action review, so if you think in terms of strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats to our budgeting process, we would hope that you come prepared um, to talk kind of in those terms. And we'll, we'll be in this room, we'll use whiteboards, I recently went through a SWOT analysis with our ELT in here, worked fine, and so I know it's doable, alright? Um, and so, next slide if we could. And so, I shared with uh, you know, with the council before, as we prepared this proposed budget uh, that you have in front of you. Um, I provided this city manager's intent um, with our purpose for why we're doing what we're doing is to ensure that Westminster thrives in two thousand twenty-four. Um, exactly what the why portion of our mission statement says, why do we do what we do to give our community the opportunity to thrive? And so, how do we do that, the method? Uh, as the city manager, you know, I always focus on mission first, and people always, um, and there were really three key parts of our budget uh, that we wanted to make sure that we ensured the budget met the needs of the community, so deliver exceptional core municipal services, maintain high standard service levels, and not to have any service reductions. Um, you know, revenues are good, they're strong, um, and so I don't see any need to reduce our current uh, service levels. Um, we wanted to establish a capital improvement plan that serves as an annual contract with the council and the community. Um, again, purpose there is, is to make sure that what we say we're gonna do, we deliver on, we hold ourselves accountable. Obviously, you know, things may happen with contracts, with contractors, work on-site, um, but for all intents and purposes, at the end of the year, we wanna be able to look back on two thousand twenty-four and say, we did all the things that we said we were gonna do from our capital budget. And then lastly, Care for City Team, we wanna recruit and retain exceptional employees through generous market-driven pay and benefits, development, and wellbeing opportunities and a positive team culture. Um, and you know, as I've shared with the council and some of the members of the staff previously, um, you know, we've got a good thing going on. Staff right now, they're a great team, um, they're melding, we've reorganized in accordance with our organizational chart up there. So we've got some new teams that are fashioning, uh, we think we're gonna be more effective and efficient under that structure. Um, and uh, you know, frankly, I think we're seeing it um, in our vacancy rate right now. Um, talked about that before, the mayor mentioned, mentioned at the uh, um, state of the city, you know, January, we were at twelve percent vacancy, working really, really hard. HR's been doing a great job of leading our recruiting efforts, uh, and the departments, uh, divisions have been working hard to make sure that they're screening folks, and we're went from twelve percent in January to four point four percent, four point four six percent here uh, in uh, in August. And so we're in a good place and continuing to do great things, but I would go back to um, the things that the city has done to make sure that um, that we have a great culture, we've got great benefits, uh, great opportunities for our city employees, the words out there on the street. Uh, we just completed an IT Director, uh, Department Director, uh, interview process. Um, I don't remember how many total uh, candidates.
Hundred and twelve.
Hundred and twelve, um, and uh, I've got it down, five exceptional candidates, five exceptional candidates that we interviewed by a Tuesday, and we'll be um, announcing uh, the finalist here, you know, coming later or so, but uh, but that's uh, that's significant when we get that kind of turnout for a department-level position, and it's because pay and benefits that the council has uh, either added or continued to support, it's about a great team culture. Um, it's about uh, you know, people being able to join the team and move through the process and continue to grow and develop as part of our city team. And so, we're an attractive place for people to uh, to work. And then, our end state, you know, when it's all said and done here at the end of October, uh, budget process is complete, the ADR is complete. We're ready to move forward into a productive two thousand twenty-four. Next slide. So um, as I've talked about previously, and I'll continue to uh, to share with people, and that is, you know, uh, we've done our um, citywide reorganization. Uh, it went into effect on seven thirty-one. Um, we uh, essentially retired our General Services Department, we moved some uh, former divisions as offices newly designated into our city manager office, we had some questions about our personnel numbers. Uh, but if you think about it, the municipal court, our city hall operations, um, our city um, uh, who else?
Policy and budget.
Policy and budget, um, have moved into the city manager's office, and so, a little bit of shift there, and then we moved some things into public works with uh, engineering and with fleet and with uh, facilities, and so a little uh, change out there. And then we've created this new uh, city engineer, um, kind of revamped position, um, that uh, you know, focuses on all things uh, construction, whether below ground, at ground level, or vertical work, so we've, we've worked hard on doing that. Um, some future actions that we're working on, uh, the city staff has just started developing a work plan, and our vision is, is to have a work plan that's aligned to our strategic plan, that really gets after five years' worth of tasks that we, the city, want to work on, whether that's capital tasks or operating tasks, we're gonna be working on that here in the fourth quarter. Um, we're continuing our space planning and utilization, again, trying to bring the team together, um, but also make sure that we're properly utilizing our facilities. Um, and we've, we've kind of gotten used to being spread out, and we're gonna bring everybody back to the mothership. Um, and then uh, we're working on that CIP process, we have a five-year CIP plan that we can present and is aligned with not only our strategic plan, but that work every year. Next slide. So uh, strategic plan, again, the budget process, the budget is a policy document. It's aligned to that strategic plan, it takes those resources that we have out there, whether that be people, whether that be money, whether that be effort, um, whether that be uh, uh, activities and uh, time spent. Um, and we make sure that we can complete these strategic planned tasks um, for the city on behalf of the council, and they're highlighted up here on the side to make sure that we stay focused, but uh, strategic priority, number one, preparedness and resilience, two, proactive public safety, three, shared sense of community, four, quality of life, and five, robust infrastructure. So um, we use those resources to make this happen. And so, I'm gonna pitch it back over to uh, Assistant City Manager and Chief of Staff, Chris Lindsay, and he'll walk you through the budget process uh, and document itself, so Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. In addition to the strategic plan and the strategic priorities that Mark just highlighted, I also wanted to make sure to raise back up with you all. You might recall, uh, a little bit over a year ago, we presented uh, two thousand twenty-two community survey. Um, and one of the key pieces of that, that, that I think we, we got that we hadn't seen uh, previously was that importance satisfaction rating. Um, and the importance satisfaction rating combines our resident scores on priority or importance of the service that the city provides, and their satisfaction with that service. And as we've prioritized resources into this budget for uh, two thousand twenty-four, certainly we've continued to go back uh, and use this uh, two thousand twenty-two community survey um, to highlight those items. In addition to that, I just wanted to mention that we've already engaged to begin the two thousand twenty-four community survey, um, so we'll have some updated numbers uh, next year. As Mark mentioned, as we get into uh, what's in the proposed budget documents, uh, we want to make sure that we uh, that we continue to provide exceptionally high levels uh, of service uh, across our organization. The budget that we've presented to you is balanced and complies with all requirements set forth in the city charter. We're projecting to draw two point eight million dollars from carryover, uh, which is less than the three point five million draw that we saw in the two thousand twenty-three adopted budget. Uh, and that draw, we're using for capital improvements. Um, and despite that decrease in carryover fund balance that we're using uh, from a previous year, we're actually increasing the funding that's going to general capital projects by nearly two and a half million dollars. Uh, so that's critical work that we've done to prioritize the needs of the community. Uh, and lastly, Department Directors continue, have looked and continue to look internally to determine if positions can be recoded or realigned uh, for new mission sets within the organization, something we talked about when we met uh, in August. I wanted to give a couple of brief uh, brief highlights on our budget, and many of these you'll see in the, in the document itself. Of the three hundred and fifty-four million dollar budget, this is a breakdown by fund within that uh, budget, so uh, you'll see on the right, the general fund is more than half of that total amount. Uh, utilities is next, our general capital improvement fund is after that, and then our post or Parks Open Space and Trails Fund uh, makes up four percent of that total amount, uh, and then smaller down from there. Focusing just on the general fund piece. That piece of the general fund is about two hundred and ten million dollars. On the left, you'll see which departments uh, are accounted for within the city's general fund. I think you'll notice that uh, on the high end there, the Police Department, our general governmental, which combines a number of functions that are administrative in nature, the Parks Recreation and Libraries Departments, and the Fire Department, and then smaller down from there. And then, on the right is uh, the general fund, again, two hundred and, two hundred and ten million dollars. You'll see that our biggest general fund expense is personnel, uh, at sixty-three percent. Um, when we met in, in uh, August, on August fifth, at our retreats, uh, I put a, put a pretty big asterisk on the work that we, we, we shared was um, preliminary in nature and not final. Um, and I wanted to highlight the, the big change that we have from the work that we showed you previously. Um, so, as we've gone through uh, the reorganization, we've also looked a lot at uh, how we're structured between what's in operating and what's in capital. And we had some pretty significant expenses that we wanted to move uh, from operating to our capital program that fit more in capital. Um, so we moved six point five million dollars in streets maintenance uh, over to our capital budget from our operating budget, um, in hopes of increasing transparency and also allowing for programmatic flexibility. We had those dollars, uh, we had those dollars split between operating and capital in previous years, and there, I think there was a, there was a method to the madness there, but uh, we seek to put all those together. Uh, as we went through the reorganization, um, we didn't account for both sides of that transaction, so we needed to go back and uh, and identify how to pay for. So we needed to go back and, and identify how to pay for that six and a half million dollars that we've moved over. And so I wanted to highlight that we did that by reallocating from some other capital projects, phasing the trailside subdivision, streets maintenance project, which we actually think is a more realistic timeline to do that. We reduced some of our other capital, capital projects. And then we identified some operational reductions. We used some of that carryover to fund that capital plan. It's the biggest change we had from our, from our budget retreat when we met over, over a month ago now. Very similar to what we showed you before. The first big item we'd like to highlight this evening, and we provided a bigger version of this in your packet for this evening, is the Human Services Board recommendations. This is the abbreviated, abbreviated version that's on the screen. Again, in your documents and the budget book, that's page 142. You also had it as a, had it, had it in slide deck. You'll see here that the Human Services Board received $237,000 in requests for funding for 2024. The Human Services Board whittled that back to a budget of $130,000. Again, the proposed budget document contains the details of the process. There's also a good description of, of each agency that requested funding, again, starting on page 142. I think the highlights here is that they've recommended funding all 27 applicants at a smaller amount typically than what they requested. We're happy to, happy to discuss this. I know we had some, we had some questions about this.
Counselor Seymour had sent us all an email sharing that what would it look like if we had three, four, whatever that number is, instead of 27, they get little and give a substantial amount to make some differences. So that's something that is out there, given to all of us to discuss.
So I can, may, sorry. Sorry, I think you had to hand it up first. If you want to be, you want to go first.
Go ahead, I'll go.
So as the liaison, I could tell you that this has been discussed over the last couple of years each time. On should we, should we give less so that we have more impact in one? Or, or sorry, to give to less agencies? And the overwhelming majority of the Human Services Board, they feel and based on the applications and based on the, and, and knowing the agencies and what they do for the community, spreading it out actually makes more impact because these agencies cover many different categories, you know, across housing and health and so forth. And every little bit does count. It looks small. It is small. They would like more. And they ask what they can ask, right, as you should. But reducing this to one agency or two agencies may help that agency, but there are so many other areas of need that don't get covered. And giving just the amounts that we have here has been seen as pretty good. And it's the minimum we can do. So I would say that I would not be in support of reducing this to a couple of agencies because these agencies cover so many things.
I have a question for, I don't know if it'd be staff or Counselor Zadi. So when I look at these, one of the things that's important to me, and then I'll get to Counselor Seymour's recommendation, is that these are agencies that are serving Westminster. And so I'm curious about specifically, because I don't recall this one on there before, is Mission Arvada. From what I read up on them, it seems like they do homeless services. But I'm curious how they ended up on our list.
Yeah, they, they do cover lots of services in Westminster. And that's one of the key criteria when we look at the applications, is making sure that the number of residents served in Westminster is high. And that's, that's looked at first. So Mission Arvada, they do a lot of things in Westminster.
What, what things do they do in Westminster?
So homeless services, they provide services to residents here. What they do for, for Arvada is they, they, they do the same.
Staff.
And Mayor Pretend, I just, they have to, in their applications, say, estimate how many residents of Westminster they serve. And in their application, they have about 175.
Great. So then that's not a concern because, I mean, that is one of the things that I want to make sure of, specifically around, you know, how we allocate homeless dollars. There's been considerable amount of light on that topic from, from the public. So I ran into, when I was at the Butterfly Pavilion, and I'm not going to say which group they're from, but one of the nonprofits, folks who runs one of the boards or is on one of the boards, found me and knew who I was and wanted to give us, give me feedback. And their feedback was that for the amount of money that they can get, although it's helpful that our process is very cumbersome and that they felt that they basically have stopped asking Westminster to provide to their nonprofit because they just said it's not, not worth going through our process. So I kind of like the idea that Counselor Seymour floated. One of the other things though, and I don't know if this is something that we try to bite off this year because, you know, we're kind of behind the eight ball at this point with our budget. But I, I think one of the things, if I look down this list, and, and I think you're going to hear this theme when we look at the council budget, at least for me you will, is there's a lot of double dipping from these different groups. They're all good groups, but I would rather us, instead of saying, you know, we're going to give out of the council budget for this particular group and we're going to give out a human services for this specific group. It would almost be nicer and more transparent to say, for example, let me see one that's on here. Ralston House is a good example. Ralston House has a lot of different ways that we give money to them. Their services are very valuable. And I would not in any way say that we don't continue to support them because they provide very important services to our community. But it would be nice to say, this one place, here's all the money that, you know, tax dollars that go from Westminster to this particular organization. I don't know what that would specifically look like, but I would like to see us paring down so that we knew per organization. Because I think one of the questions that, and this gets into the next part with the council budget, that we always, as at least I know, a couple of us always ask is, what other money have we already given to this organization? Whenever that, like a golf tournament, tournament, you know, whatever comes up. I don't know that I would go with one or two though, if we pared this down. I would, you know, maybe pare it down to a handful of them. But I do like Counselor Seymour's idea. Making sure that that process is still a good process. And if we need to make any tweaks to it, it already goes that route. So we should make sure that it's a good, serious process.
Just listening to all of us back and forth, and my, my initial question was, when we're only giving them a smaller amount from what they requested, is it worth it? And I think, I, you know, is that the inclusivity board's opinion that it's still worth it? Or are you here, because we're, you know, are the organizations kind of having a hard time?
Well, the Human Services Board. So they're composed of long tenured residents? Most of them have been on there for quite some time. They understand these agencies, it's the same agencies that, mostly the same ones that apply for years and years. And they, yes, the, the, that is a common thing that the process is cumbersome because what they're using, from what I understand, what they use is the, I forget the terminology, but it's the typical grant application that was created 20 years ago that many organizations use across different industries. It's a very long, it's, it's detailed. So there's two sides of that, Mayor Pretend, where, yes, it's cumbersome. But if we had an easier process, then is that really enough due diligence, right? If, if we want to be smarter with, with how we give out money to organizations, particularly for human services needs, then shouldn't we keep a high standard of making sure that if you really want, because the, the argument against reducing this, there's another piece of that. Many of these organizations are different sizes, right? So some of them are really small. And the larger ones are the ones we hear more that the process is cumbersome, et cetera, right? But the smaller ones are still doing it because even a thousand dollars matters to them. And it, and some of them depend on this almost where it's, it's a necessary piece of their own budget that they depend on every year from us, and it keeps them afloat. So the sizes range from large to small. And the legacies of each organization ranges from new orgs to really long orgs. Long history orgs. That's why I think we should keep it spread out.
Counselor Zadi, I think it's, as the staff leader is on to Human Services Board, another point that a lot of the board members bring up about giving smaller amounts to more organizations is that it, in some cases, helps them leverage kind of the relationship with the city and they can help out their work when they're applying for other grants. And so that, that component helps make it a little bit more worth it, even if it is a larger organization.
Yeah, because many, many of them look at, once they get our grants, it helps them with their bigger grants that they go for because it shows, oh, they've been given money from Westminster. So it helps their applications to these future grants. That's a good point.
If we haven't changed things for 20 years or however long it's been, do you think the Human Services Board would do a few special meetings to look at the grant process and see what criteria they really would need to have, make a decision? And let them throw around what they think of paring this down a little bit or not? And getting their feedback as a board, having to do it. But I think there's time, because I think we sent them out in March. There's time now if, if you thought that they would come together for a special piece that we'd like them to look at and don't know what they would come up with, but at least have them wrestle with it.
Yeah, I think, I was just going to add that I did think that the Human Services Board should make a recommendation on what they think would be the best approach. And, you know, taking in all of our input of understanding the process. And maybe they do some due diligence with talking to some of the organizations, a little bit of stakeholder outreach so that they can make an informed decision and actually help us understand because we're all hearing lots of different stuff.
Counselor Baker?
How many people did we turn down?
This process, zero, zero organizations.
Because I, acknowledging the difficulty of Counselor Seymour's suggestion, I think has got some real basis. Because then we focus efforts to a project. This just sort of seems we're generally supporting all our friends with no goal in mind, with no purpose in mind. Now, of course, if you make the job of the Human Services Board 10 times more difficult, because then they'd have to start saying no to people if you're going to give other people larger amounts. But I think it's worth a look at, or the idea, I think it's worth a look at.
One thing that I think would be interesting to see moving forward, and again, I don't think this year maybe necessarily depends on it. But, I mean, and these are all organizations that I think you hear support for council, but organizations like CASA and like Ralston House, I mean, they're almost gimmies. And like, if you really wanted to be competitive, change in the process might be valuable because I think that some of these, I'd, I'd be curious to see a list of how many years back each of these go. So like, has it been, you know, every year they put in and we're definitely going to give them money? Not that that's necessarily bad because they serve the community, but it's, you know, we have a process for a reason. And I think one of the other things that may be of value is to have more of, and maybe this is something the Human Services Board looks at, is maybe they actually have, you know, they know what their budget is for the year and they come up with a certain amount of grants at certain levels that they, you know, vet through. Because, you know, not that $4,000 isn't something that, somebody like CASA, but just sitting at their event, they have big events and the capability to raise some decent sized money. Or some of these up and coming ones that maybe, say it's around homelessness, which is, you know, an issue that continues to get worse unfortunately. Maybe there's a nonprofit that would better be served from a larger grant in a given year because of whatever they're trying to accomplish. I mean, it's no different than our budget. Sometimes we have capital improvement things that, you know, are big dollars from year to year. And I know that nonprofits are no different. So I like the idea of throwing it back to them with some of this feedback and just seeing like, you know, what does that look like? Because maybe you could kind of do the best of both worlds and have some smaller grants and maybe have a couple of larger grants that people can compete for. And then it makes our process a little bit more competitive. And maybe, you know, it, it kind of solves that problem. As far as like whether or not it's too cumbersome, I have not, you have never went through our grant process. I just thought it was relevant to share, you know, that somebody sidelined me and asked me about it. I did sit as a liaison one year for this. It's been a couple of years ago. But, you know, I, you know, I heard what you were hearing as far as the folks that do this work. I think they almost feel, I think they would feel bad, frankly, saying no to any of these groups because they're all good causes that, I think it has happened in the past and it's usually around groups that don't really serve Westminster.
But plus, there's specific criteria. There's like four categories, housing, healthcare, forget the other two, that they have to meet. So they have said, no, I think last year we said no.
Food, health, mental health and shelter services to Westminster residents.
And with that being said, that might be something else that we are, if those four categories are important enough to us, that, you know, you put some merit around them somehow, but.
Maybe like a, like we can set the weight, right? If, if housing is more important, then we give a certain weight to, to housing, so the budget amount.
Yeah.
I just wanted to summarize what I'm hearing, and that is perhaps a desire for change in what this process looks like. But I want to clarify, this current 2024 process is five months into the making at this point. You know, applications went out mid-April, submissions were due June 1st. Evaluations occurred with the HSB June through July. And then those recommendations are forwarded. So my question is, is that would it make sense to keep what's been proposed and recommended by the HSB for 2024? And over the winter 2024, 2025, the HSB takes a look at what that process might be changed to and comes back to the council, call it, you know, the end of the winter, no later than, so that then we can move forward for a 2025 appropriate allocation. Michael, does that make sense to you?
Yeah, yes, it does.
That's what I have down here. I don't hear anybody saying no to this. What I hear is getting the Human Services Group back to discuss grant, how it's written, what really needs to be on there, can it be simplified? What criteria do you need and how to dispense $130,000?
My only, and I agree with all that, and that sounds good to me, and I would support that. But I would like to understand a mechanism for if an organization comes. So that we, and it might not be that it, it's bad that they, you know, take a couple dips out of the pie, so to speak. But it would be nice to know that, to be able to easily say, this nonprofit, where do we give them? Do we have any MOUs with them? Do we, what different mechanisms are we already funding them? Because I, I think that would probably be even valuable for the Human Services Boards to understand that. That way, if they have competing needs when they go through their process, they don't feel so mad if one of these groups that, you know, we support heavily because of what they do for us asks for money.
It would be really helpful.
And I don't, you guys usually meet in May to start the next year?
Hit off in April, June, July.
So for me, I'd like this process defined before the next go around.
Special.
So by March, which is.
Anything else on this topic? One done?
That's fair.
Oh, can I say something first before it's on my agenda? Um, org chart is missing two pieces. Above city manager should be city council and then on one side has our attorney. One side has, um, judge and you're in the center and above us is, um, community, uh, citizens. See two elements and two of our.
Thank you, Mayor. Next on the agenda, we wanted to briefly discuss the city's council's operating budget. So like many of our other departments, we do have a, a budget allocation for, uh, city council themselves. And it includes the items that you'll see, uh, on, uh, the list in front of you. The biggest changes that, uh, that we're seeing, um, from 2023 to 2024. The city council salaries, those, uh, increase every two years by the same cumulative percentage as our exempt employees. Uh, so that's, uh, we're seeing an increase of that in 2024. Um, and then, uh, separate from this, but related on the next slide, we'll get into the city council's sponsorships budget, uh, sponsorships and community support budget. Um, staff is making a recommendation to reduce that amount by $14,000, um, in 2024. Um, there are some smaller movements, um, and some of the other accounts, but I think those are the, those are the highlights that I wanted to make sure to address.
What is contract services?
Contract services. I think that's mostly. Contract services, uh, I gotcha. Uh, includes facilitation, includes newspaper advertisements, uh, facilitation of, uh, of, uh, annual appraisal processes, printing of miscellaneous materials, uh, goal setting, uh, facilitator, um, photo badges, miscellaneous, uh, miscellaneous items throughout the year.
I'm curious to know just of, uh, our career development and or media, I don't know which. Um, I'm assuming those are conferences. How much have we typically expended? Do we usually spend that whole budget?
Don't usually expend, spend that entire budget.
I hop on that because that was my question. It's like in my tenure, I've taken one trip. My understanding is we're budgeted for two trips. So, um, I'm assuming like when that, I just go back into the general fund that we have here that. But it would, it would be nice to see year to year, like, some reporting for the council budget so that we had a better understanding of, uh, of those dollars and how it's spent. Just kind of please ourselves, and I don't think I've ever seen that before.
And the city manager and I have talked about, um, with COVID and councils that were elected during that time and stuff. Um, probably a lot of folks don't understand some of the, um, reasons why you might go to, um, some of the NLC things, uh, either the one in DC or the one in fall. And, uh, for those that are especially just coming onto council, haven't had a seat on anything like this before, it's invaluable because you're talking to people across the country, dealing with the same issues, but looking at it very differently and you come back going, you can look at things more than one way. So, um, it is important and we need to do a better job helping folks understand why this is available, um, and encourage people to use it. Um, I have Mayor, are you done?
That's, yeah, that was exactly what I was curious about and to just be able to see into that a little bit.
Councilor Emmons?
Is, was this a, um, something that was amended from the publication of our actual book? Our actual budget? Because the numbers there don't match my council budget here. And so.
So we did change the PowerPoint slide deck and the attachment from where it was published last Wednesday. Um, we didn't have, we didn't have all the lines accounted for in there. So what's on the slide, on the slide in front of you, and what's in the attachment on the, uh, packet right now match the budget document?
Helpful, but would be more helpful, actual budget review in the document. Just because as you're looking at the entirety of it, uh, it's easier to follow when you have the entire scope instead of just a presentation. So this is what I think our complaint from, or at least mine, from day one of this budget process is that this should have been, all of this should have been prior. So that's just my thoughts as far as, uh, some improvements we can make to the next budget cycle, so.
Good job. Councilor Studding?
To follow up on that, but what, so on the, in the packet or in the document, it says actuals for 21 and 22. Do we not have actuals for 23? Year to date?
Not present on here. I, we can pull those and report back to council if that's a desire.
Is there any rough idea of how much expense totals? Just for.
It's in the monthly financial report, which is online. I think that's gonna be the best answer at the, at the moment. We'll pull that though. If you can pull that up.
And the second thing, I liked Mayor McCann's idea related to the transparency of double dipping. Because there are many human services agencies in the sponsorships line item here that also apply to the grant. And I would love it, I mean, we, we always want more, right? But the human services budget, I would love to see a consolidation of that budget where if it's an agency that would typically get funded by the board, they should increase the budget of the board by that amount so that it's all in one place.
Yeah, there's, there's a ton of, um, of, uh, of.
Draws.
Yeah, yeah. Overlaps, yep.
Mayor? Uh, thank you to, to Mr. Dorr for flagging the monthly financial report for me. So again, that's published every, that's published every month. Uh, the most recent report that's published is July 31st and the actuals for the city council's, uh, office budget were $149,627. And then those have been reported on monthly.
So yeah, let's, uh.
Seven, seven months. Based on, based on previous year's calculations, uh, the financial report has that of having spent about two thirds of the budget prorated.
Yeah, 225, if you straight line it.
So likely we'll be under, are we always under?
Typically, yes.
We're typically under, what are we over budgeting for in the?
So I think that you mentioned career development. That's something where, um, we have a couple of conferences outlined and a budget for every member of council to attend. Um, I think that's something we'd rather have, have available, um, than not. But that's something we haven't seen, especially the past few years of COVID. Uh, all of council here, the majority of council attend to those conferences. So I think that's something that, that goes up and down.
Would council be open to moving some of those double dips to the human services, which would bring this lower to actual?
You gotta remember what they're for though, they're not just give giveaways, they're our sponsorship for table events.
Most of our stuff is for fundraisers. This is for actual doing the work, but like the CASA we went to the other night, they raised $75,000. I mean, you got a dinner, but the purpose, and you go there knowing you're to give money. I mean, and we do that individually. Yes, the city pays for our table, but then you're the one, um, giving.
I, I think, and I mean, I still want to be able to see the multiple places they give. But like this last week is a great example to the mayor's point, each individually giving. It does a couple of different things, I think, as a municipality that benefits from the services that they give. Um, it shows, one, that the city, you know, this is a priority for them is to take care of the, the folks that CASA serves, um, or whoever that it might be, but with the example of CASA. And then each into of our individual giving, I think doubles down on the importance of it, uh, to the community that the council also individually gives. So, um, although there are places in our budget where we're doing multiple events for one agency. And I think that's, I mean, there's room to, for discussion in that for me. But, um, but just remember that those are events that we typically go to to show council and community support for those organizations.
Mayor, would you like me to jump ahead to the sponsorships? Are you already there? I'll do that. So that part of that budget that was in special promotions there, um, is that council sponsorships, uh, council sponsorships list. Um, and, and earlier this year, we, we went through a, a pretty detailed review of this. And we had a lot of input from Mayor McNally, I appreciate, uh, that going through with staff, uh, to come up with a, a more narrow list for, uh, the, that council sponsorships and, uh, support budget. Certainly open a feedback on this.
And right off the bat, we, we, council do Westminster Rotary, 710 Foundation. Um, and we give 3250. That includes also the roast and a golf scramble. And I thought I saw. But let's see, the CASAs, um, Gilpin County and, um, Jefferson. And they're on the, um, the human services piece. But ours is just for a big dinner that they have. Um, and one's a white tasting, so.
Another thing with this, and I like the condensed list, but one of the things that over time, and I think things have gotten kind of wonky through COVID and everything and getting back into the groove of doing events over the last year and a half. Um, making sure that council places itself to make sure that if we sign up for one of these, we give ample time to staff if we're not gonna make it so that, um, hopefully they could fill a seat. If, because if, if we care enough about these organizations, I think it's really important for us to fill the tables because I think, and I've been at, uh, a couple in the last year where we maybe had half a table. And I just think it's a, a bad luck because it is taxpayer dollars for one and two, doesn't really look like we're really supporting it that strong. And I know that, I have to imagine that in an organization of our size, there's somebody here that cares about these different causes that we give to that will be willing to kind of support the organization and show Westminster support. So, um, you know, maybe even there could, you could give us a rough, uh, policy or something from, uh, city manager's office that says, hey, we need to know by this day. I think that the sheets and stuff probably have helped that effort and maybe some of that was spurred from that. Um, but it's a good reminder for council too that, you know, I think it would be a bad luck if we're gonna put dollars behind one of these.
And if I could, we've, uh, you know, due to some sensitivities about this, um, you know, after council gets first dibs, you know, and then we work through, you know, kind of from the top of the organization, we'll fill the tables, the challenges if somebody's, um, you know, at the last minute, something changes in their personal life and they miss something and, you know, and they don't show, and then we have empty seats. But I, you know, I will tell you that, um, our clerk's office works really hard to make sure that, you know, if there are available seats, we're gonna keep peppering people until we find folks that are willing to participate.
Not on that note, but just, just in this list, um, I know there's probably reasoning behind why we have different amounts that we're giving to the high schools. But if there's a way to equally distribute those funds so that the high, the high schools all have a neutral account.
They're out of Westminster. Our kids go there, both to Pomona and to Legacy, but Stanley's in Westminster, Westminster High's in Westminster.
Yeah, so, but, well, if that's the case, then Jefferson Academy, which is in Burnfield, should be less as well. So I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to think.
I don't disagree.
Equitably.
I don't know who said the 200. I'm happy to give any of the kids money so that they can be safe.
Those are my main goals. Okay.
Do the organizations know these amounts?
So organizations know these.
Like Almost Home, do they know that they'll get 1,000 from us next year? Because they've always gotten 1,000 or?
Sometimes they'll send us the thing and their sponsorship went, have, went up. They've got to start understanding, we do budget just like they do. And so I know, um, I don't know where Cody is, um, she's been good about calling and, um, sort of trying to set that tone because, um, we just got one today that I know we already have done something with. And it, to me, is if you double dip for a second time, decide for, for our stuff, decide where you want us. We, we can only come once. If I want to go to something else, I'll do it on my own dime. But for this council, um, to not double dip, what's the one thing you want us? And how much is it gonna be? And, um, then I can't imagine what staff would do without having to deal with this week after. And I get sick of the emails, um, because it's gotta be a nightmare. And if they're not on this list, then we're not doing it, put them on for next year and we'll discuss it at budget time. Um, but I'm sort of hard-nosed about that.
These are not really based off of, of us picking a number like maybe human services boards do. Um, these are based off of what, what's been in the past or, so like, for example, the roast, usually that's a thousand dollar sponsorship for a table. So a lot of these are off of historic numbers. And what I've seen in my time is, uh, a lot of times the contingency is used in two ways. One, we'll get an event that we get invited to or that a council member hears about that potentially we want to support. Um, the other way is that, and this has probably been more prevalent in this last kind of cycle of events because cost of everything has went up, so people might increase those sponsorship dollars because cost of meals and, and event space and all those things have went up. So, uh, maybe, you know, not to pick on Rotary, but maybe Rotary says last year was a thousand dollars for a table. This year it's 1250. Um, and so that's my experience what these are based off of. I would like to, um, since I'm speaking, uh, support what Councilor Nardella said and let's be equalized across the different high schools. Because I think that makes sense and gives itself with the same cause. Uh, so I don't know if you maybe do them all at 500 or if you, uh, just increase the tour that are 200 to, you know, another 800 dollars, how do we make the contingency less potentially?
I, certainly I think we could equalize them all at 600 dollars without too much of an impact. Um, I believe, um, the, the practice was looking at a percentage of student population that was from Westminster. Uh, not just where they were physically located, but the percentage of the population at school.
So you said in this you did some work to, and maybe it's in the packet and I apologize if I missed it. The, so you're, you have, uh, done some squeezing on this budget, which I'm fine with. But what dropped off or did anything drop off or did each one kind of lower? Since you, you had mentioned, I think you said $14,000 that you, uh, were looking to decrease this. I imagine that kind of covers, uh, some of that increase in the, um, overall council budget.
So the second page of attachment B, um, includes a, a comparison there between 23 and 24. And there's your number of the items that are marked in the column on the right, removed for, uh, inactivity. Um, I'll give you a couple of highlights. I'll give you a couple of highlights there. Access Housing Winter Gala, Adams County Economic Development Excellence Awards, Adams County Youth Initiative Rocky Mountain Partnership. The Jefferson Economic Development Corporation Annual Awards Dinner. There's a number of those.
The Adams County Youth Initiative one, just because it's a big dollar amount, I'm trying to recollect what that is.
Is that our, where we have students that are nominated and then they go to the county level and then?
I don't have that history of that.
If that's it, I don't want to say no. Those are the only time those kids are recognized.
That's the youth awards program. This is, I'm sorry, Barbara Obie Duncan, City Manager. This program is actually an initiative that was started by, I believe, the sheriff and the DA at Adams County. It was trying to work on metrics to try to help improve people's young adults' trajectory. And this was one of the things that was identified at the time. So there was a work group, actually, I believe Mr. Dorr had been attending for a little while on behalf of the city.
Did it kind of go away, or?
Actually, I don't know the status of this group at this time.
Yeah, I believe they've evolved quite a bit to Rocky Mountain Partnership over the years. That's been at least two or three years. That's why I wasn't recalling this. Opi, I beg your pardon. I know that Lindsay Kimball has been our staff liaison to the group, but as Mr. Lindsay points out, and others have described, these opportunities open and close at time and adjust in cost and so forth. And so we're keeping sort of a live running activity of what's been on and what's been removed. And I think what has been reflected in these sponsorships here is really our best foot forward and what we think is the right mix and reflects increasing costs as well. Great, thank you.
With the Adams County Bar Association's annual law day, we don't always hear about it. I heard about it, and then we didn't have anybody nominated. So I didn't go, but that's an important thing if we have people. There's where we have to communicate with our police department. Do they have any nominations? They may not know if we have any award winners, but that's one of the best breakfasts I've ever gone to, so I'd hate to see that one go away. We need to support them.
There's also, this is reminding me, Dr. Cog has impact awards, and we've received some over the years. They do, you know, they put out their requests, so I don't know if that's something that we'd be interested in earmarking.
I think we just need to make sure in my mind that we have enough contingency in there for those things. And then to make, to the mayor's point, certainly would, if we have folks who are being nominated, we should support them.
And Mayor Porten, there's nine, almost nine thousand dollars there, and so, you know, I mean, there's lots of money to be able to go do these things and support them. You know, if we know about them, one, and if we, you know, as to the mayor's point, if we've got somebody that's being recognized, we certainly want to be there.
Councilor Baker?
Yeah, I'd like to propose that we do this differently, or at least think about it doing differently. Because like our previous charitable contributions, it's almost become pro forma, rote. So consider if we divided this pond into eight parts, gave one to each council member and two to the mayor, and then put the burden of deciding on each one of the council members. City really manager's office would keep track of who has how much and could basically really direct the applicants to counselors who had the money left over. I think we'd get a much more diverse mix of how the money.
I would be concerned with seven people. We're not getting a true census of the community. We are majority rules bonding, and I think that we're going to change anything, it needs to still be subject to four votes.
I like having session about.
It's an interesting thought. I mean, I appreciate the freshness. Yeah, it's just different. It's an interesting thought. But I would be concerned, one, our process is majority moves things forward, but our process also is, I'm concerned that there might be an organization that you want to support, but I don't. And it's really going against my principles, and it's just, and the people that I help represent in my community and our community, so that's where I feel like. But the differences and the majority moves forward would be diverting back to what classically has been done.
Good thoughts. I don't hear consensus on that one. Are we okay with what's presented? Moving all the high schools listed to six hundred dollars? So that's two of them changed. And do you want to change anything else?
Do we have criteria on how the contingency? So is it similar where it needs to be in Westminster? Or is the percentage of Westminster population served, or?
It's four votes.
So I'll tell you how I do mine, is if it's in Westminster. Because I feel like if we're putting money back into our community, it stays in our community and that's, we've already allocated across jurisdictions and resources. And so how I do the contingency is, are you in Westminster? Because I don't want to pick and choose, like, oh, it sounds good, it sounds great. The main priority for me is like, is it in Westminster? And then.
Westminster is one?
Physically located or serving?
Serving, like the person.
That's different.
Mine is located.
Yours is located or yours is serving?
Mine is serving, but I mean, in that's historically, the things like the Persian Day event, they needed a capital ticketed. And we did participate in that. There's been other things that I know have been in Denver or St. or our community that four members have said yes, but. But ultimately, we have to answer to our constituents about why we're spending tax dollars on something, so.
And I'd still like to find a way between our two lists for better community outreach, because we ultimately help these organizations if a hundred and nineteen thousand people know about them. Not separate. Okay, anything else on this? Are we good?
It's the corrections, A C P A C. Breakfast. Thank you.
Hey, council, next up on our agenda this evening is public input. Start to get community budget requests throughout the year through a number of mechanisms. Search these and bring these back to you as recommendations and a write-up that's in the proposed budget document. I would also add, in addition to ones that are in the proposed document, what you're not seeing are the requests that staff is able to fulfill during the year. And we work with, and actually shout out to Teresa Boco on our staff, works with all our departments to track these throughout the year and see the ones that are not able to be fulfilled. And we had one that was proposed in the budget document, and then one we heard last week in public comment, so I'll hit the one that we have the detailed write-up in the proposed budget document. So the city received a request from Maker Housing Partners to fund tenant improvements and startup costs for a children's health clinic at their site in Westminster. They asked for approximately five hundred thousand dollars of one-time funds. And this is a partnership they have with a company, a nonprofit called Kids First, to put a children's healthcare clinic in their commercial space at the Alto Development, as I mentioned. As staff reviewed this, and we talk a lot about the city manager's intent for this budget, due to that, we were not recommending this for inclusion within the 2024 proposed budget.
Sorry, due to what, sir?
Due to the manager's intent that we're funding the existing programs and projects of the city, we did not include this in the 2024 proposed budget.
Was there also? Was there also a thought, I remember reading that there may be some grant opportunity for this request to be built in a different way?
Correct, but not with city funds.
Councilor Evans?
So this was an item that I asked council to think about. In my tenure on council, I don't believe that there's ever really truly been a formalized process to bring forward community requests. And so I know each year we've had more than just one. And so it's concerning that there's not more because we continually hear during public comment of items that would like to be changed or addressed. And while it may have been addressed during the year, that's something that maybe could be addressed in council budget of, we did X, Y, so we know that there's community requests being taken into consideration and completed. Now, for, for the request for a budget item, I think it should be more than just a public hearing last week, for example, just because we've seen many times that, one, it's not easy to read a full budget or understand it. And two, people aren't as engaged as we would love them to be. And so if they're able to provide comment and feedback throughout the year as far as what council should be focused on, whether that be through council request to staff, I just feel like there should be more formalized process of check marking or earmarking. This would be a good process to add to our our community requests for the budget for 2024, or maybe 2025. But I feel like it needs to be more formalized than what it currently is.
Mayor Porten?
Kind of in between, like, I think that we need to, because, I mean, it's always been in my mind, the formal process is the public hearing. But we've also accepted the budget request during that time through email and a variety of ways. But to Councilor Evans' point, we certainly do hear throughout the year, so a couple of things. One, it would be nice to maybe see a list of times for people coming and ask for something. I mean, typically you usually do, but if it's something that's new, I don't know how you keep a running tally besides just, you know, we get them in updates and stuff, which sometimes we catch up, sometimes we don't. You know, running lists are, I think, are good for a group like this because when we get to this point, we want to review it versus maybe in our busy week, best when you try to report back, which is on us, but still, that's the reality of what I've seen myself do, I guess. I won't speak for other people, but it certainly would be valuable. But I think the other thing is just making sure that we're doing good as an organization when people come with those things, saying, here's the proper place. And if we need to make the proper place better, whether it be at public public comment time during the budget process, or whether or not we have just an online forum, which we were talking about this, I don't even know if there's a specific place on Access Westminster where you can go and say budget request. But if there's not, maybe that's an option, just so that we're constantly throughout the year driving people to understand, here's what the process is, here's how you can ask for, you know, that. Probably paired with, we're going to look at that before then, but, you know, here's that, that avenue, so that we're educating the public along the way so that they understand the city budget process and they have more opportunity to engage in it, is my view of it.
I would agree with Councilor Evans and Mayor Porten. And I would say that that running, that we should simplify it for the public, meaning we don't formalize their process of how they should give it to us. We should, on a running basis, when people come and make a public comment and it's a budget, or it's a budget-related change that they want to see, they may not know it's a budget-related change, right? They just want something changed. We should collect all of that, and you guys should figure out, well, this is a budget-related change, and then you formalize us, so we can, we should be doing this sooner, this meeting, right? Before your proposed budget, looking at all the various changes throughout the year, you collate that for us. We give you direction, and then you take our input and then you propose a budget to us based off of that. But the way it's working now is you guys propose a budget. We somehow get, we have these very formal, my, you know, once or twice, the public can come in, give their, give their needs, which we only see a few of we also want this year. And then we kind of give you our view in this meeting. But I think we should kind of flip the script and make this much sooner where we can, where your proposed budget should already include the community's needs that you've gathered throughout the year.
I would like to clarify, so the, this request in particular was received in July, so prior to the, prior to the proposed budget, and we're seeking to, seeking to track those. Just the last few years, we've seen a fall off in the number of requests that we've seen. That said, you could compare this to things like the Human Services Board grant requests as well, so they've seen more, we've seen less on this front.
I can just also add, I mean, not to complicate it, but you know, the CDBG process, where we have community members requesting projects or things, you know, that's an opportunity for us to be listening and jotting that down. We also go out into the community to hear, you know, the Harris Park Plan process. We have brought some ideas to light, so just to be listening, and maybe there's also an element of reaching out to those departments that are in the community more. And say, hey, what have you heard? What are some trends or thoughts or desires you're hearing from the community in your efforts? And I do still like having this iterative, you know, input from the community and tracking that.
To me, it's easier to be able to have some place when I'm thinking about it, put it down wherever it is, so. Number one, I would think that helps whenever we get it, before a dead, have a deadline in July or whatever it is. So it can really be looked at honestly, see what what it's going to cost and whatnot. Getting everything at once seems like it would be more hassle than as people are thinking of things from now until next July. Let them express it so we can keep track of it, so, you know. If they're like me, I'll go, I know I had something really good, but I didn't write it down, I didn't send it in, so what was it? And you wake up at three in the morning the day after it's all finished again. So, yeah, I think we can do a better job. I would think it would make it easier for you all, and we'd have better discussion and the public would know they really do have an input.
Just one additional thing, that the 2024 community survey could be a way to have an open-ended item for budget requests.
Like we're jumping ahead and just swat that you're supposed to do in a couple weeks.
We're all doing it, so.
I just need to give them my book. They'll get how I want it when it's fixed.
Just want to say too, on this actual request, I'd be open to a smaller amount. We don't have to give the full five hundred thousand. And I also don't think that, I mean, this was a community request, right? I don't think that, no offense, City Manager, that the City Manager's intent is the guiding principle as to whether we accept community requests or not. I think that's, should be flipped as well.
I support what staff, but not because it's not an important thing, but it's not a core service. What I'm hearing you say is, you know, we have a lot of competing in order to meet those needs. This would pull away from other needs, so I think the recommendation makes sense, especially since it's not, not a core service of what a municipality does.
I don't know. I don't know, it's probably written somewhere, what has been decided for independence with all the people that have come sharing about cars and traffic and, and problems? Have we come to any conclusions for that, for the budget?
Maybe we'll adjust what's booked to.
Malcolm.
Evening, Mayor.
Mayor Portman.
For Independence Drive, the city has implemented a few mitigation efforts over the years. We've installed three, I think they're flashing beacons in this neighborhood. We performed, implemented two speed tables. And those were based on speed studies taken in three different locations over the years. So all this work has been done, two, two of the beacons were installed in 2023, one was installed. Based on those speed studies, we do believe that the data supports these measures and possible additional measures. We do have existing funds in a, in a traffic calming account that we have earmarked to, to put, to implement measures in some form in 2024. And we hope to have a plan for, for what those measures are and then also seek community input as well on those measures.
What's the total in the traffic calming accounts?
$100,000.
And that's for citywide?
It's a citywide account. We have identified that this is the area that we would, as the priority of the, the funds.
So $100,000 for mitigating the speeding on Independence?
Some traffic calming measures, yes.
And you'll have a community meeting to discuss it or?
We will be rolling out some form of community engagement. Pick our, our options for, for mitigation.
When are you picking the options? Order, is it soon? When are you meeting on this? What, what's the time? Give us the timing.
I can, I can follow up with that. I would assume that it'd be the, the first half would be this out, second half would be installation. I can sort of follow up with a better schedule on, on when we can roll this out.
And this gets into like these next things because of this came up in the meeting when we started talking about these efforts. Are we making sure that we have enough in that for anything that comes about when we start looking at the Jefferson County school changes? Like you have some of these here, but I mentioned that I know for a fact in the Walnut Grove countryside area, basically where 104th turns into Johnson, there are now kids who have to cross that and they have to kind of go up the street back and backwards or forwards to where there's a crosswalk because of, you know, before that just wasn't the reality of them having to cross over that busy street in order to catch a bus. But now that there are so many kids with wet clothing that have to be bussed over to Lucas, they're having to cross that busy street. And I've got feedback about that from a handful of parents. That's just the one example I know of. I have to imagine with the amount of schools we had close, that there are probably similar situations. And I don't think they're probably high dollar things. It's probably more like making sure we have aligned crosswalks so that there's safe crossing for the kiddos when they go to their new bus stop. But, you know, so I'm hoping that we have enough funds for that as we do outreach to Jefferson County to figure out where the bus stops are now located versus where they were before.
Just all of this combined, schools and the traffic mitigation. I mean, it looks pretty tight in terms of what we've set aside for next year. It's only $35,000 unless there's another bucket somewhere else. And so my question was just that, is that enough for really kind of the issues that we're seeing?
As far as the school mobility account, we have some existing funds that we'll be carrying over. So we adjusted our quest based on those existing funds. We do feel that we're in good shape as far as that goes. As far as the traffic mitigation program, that partly, we are, we are requesting similar, the same amount as we did in 2024. That account, we have to take into account staff load, staff capacity on that account. It is very administrative, there's a lot of administrative oversight that goes with those traffic mitigation requests. We feel like the number that, the amount that we requested not only provides consistent services to the community for those types of requests, but it's something that staff believes we can deliver from what we're asking to stand for. There's a lot of evaluation, coordination, installation, because most of the requests are within the local neighborhoods. Do those with in-house. So we feel like the, the request that we gave is something that we can deliver on and provide services that are consistent with the past.
Well, you said there is like a hundred thousand dollars this year that you were going to be wise for, for Independence. What, what bucket is that?
The traffic calming CIP account. It's an existing account.
Different one than traffic mitigation. And then where would this fall?
This would, this would fall under our new streetlights program account. We've talked with policy and budget on this request and we think that it, it matches up with the description of the account.
Is that, where's that one?
That is an existing account that has existing funds in it and.
$350,000.
So can this be accommodated within that account already?
The request, it can be accommodated in that account. The, that account is a little different over the past few years because wherever we've developed and paid upfront for Excel installations and infrastructure, we get rebates back when those are developed and actually become services. And that account has been receiving some revenue over the years to, for those, for those rebates.
So it's a different, so it's actual revenue?
The revenues from those rebates have been going into that CIP account, the traffic, CIP account.
He has some questions.
I got questions. All right, so there's four accounts, traffic calming, school mobility, traffic mitigation, and streetlights engagement.
New streetlight program, yes.
Now, the traffic calming you said was a hundred thousand, that's not all just for Independence? Or is it?
It depends on the traffic mitigation or traffic calming measures that, that we propose. Traffic, traffic calming is, there's a wide range of tools that we can use on traffic mitigation. We just need to evaluate the street. Some of them are less expensive than, than others. So until we actually take a look at this street and see what we can, we can deliver on that, we're not sure exactly how much that is going to cost.
The total traffic calming account, what's the total budget?
$100,000.
That's the total?
That is the total.
Okay, so you're saying you're just, you're going to prioritize independence, depending on what solutions you come up with? Hopefully it's a hundred, it's under a hundred.
Correct.
And then the second question on this West Cliff neighborhood, but more importantly on all the schools. So what Mayor Portman was getting at? That, is that traffic mitigation and school mobility accounts? That's the, that's where those would come out of?
Typically, the school mobility accounts if we're installing the flashing beacons adjacent to a school.
Wait, can we look at speed tables versus bumps?
We performed a speed study along Pier Street in 2021 and 2022 in three locations. And the data did not support those types of medications.
Do we have, I mean, because basically anything over 20 miles per hour deadly, so having somebody hit. So do we have our, our cars going 20 miles an hour or less along these road lanes?
Well, we have a criteria on, on certain percentage over the, the speed limit. Trigger the criteria to, to look at speed tables and the data did not support that.
Well, I would encourage us to look at it a little bit differently more with, I mean, hopefully we'll replace our transportation planning. Do we have somebody back in that role, transportation planner? I'd probably talk to them about, just it's more about getting the speeds to a level where they're, we're trying to avoid deadly danger.
You're saying 20 miles per hour residential neighborhood, 25 isn't it?
Yeah, something to think about.
I mean, that, that's not feasible though to put a speed table in every neighborhood. You'd have different kind of anger coming.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying everywhere, I'm just saying where you have, yeah, where you have kids kind of making a crossing.
Well, I, I don't disagree with going after speed. I just question what speed should be. I don't know, I don't know how you guys study it. What level of speed would that?
Sure.
Maybe that's a study session for the future so we can understand speed tables at this speed or. I mean, we often get asked for speed notes and, you know, people are told no. But I have no idea of how those calculations happen to be able to go back to that resident who disagrees with us to be able to be educated and have a conversation with them. So it would probably be useful time in the future for council to be a little better educated about how those different traffic measures may be implemented, or at least the ones that we are asked about frequently, like speed tables.
Again, there's a, there's a wide range of traffic calming and traffic medications. It might, while this might not refer to speed tables, we are open to other, other traffic calming patient measures as they present themselves.
What about, how, how do you allocate increased police presence? Do you allocate budget numbers to that? Because that's time that they're taking to, like during certain times, you know, during the day that's high traffic and we want to increase police presence to be deterrent. Do you allocate budget dollars for that or no? Is it just that? Of course we have, we have everyone.
Councilor, thanks for the question. Mayor, Mayor Portman, Councilor Norm Howard, Chief of Police. So the budget, as it's related to personnel, is allocated to us for based off of staffing needs. And then from there, we look at the data to see what priority calls are there, what times are school zones start, school zones end, and then try and have officers there for those enforcement opportunities. Some of it does, does relate to call load. You know, if we do have a high priority or there's an accident, you know, on the turnpike, that type of thing, that will take some of those resources offline and we're not able to do some of those pro activities. So a lot of it is, you know, trying to match up the call load with the staffing. You know, and as we get to more of a full staffing component, we're better able to respond to some of those other, other complaints. But the traffic unit is full. Right now, we are going to be missing one accident investigator that's leaving us, leaving, going out of state. Outside of that, we are full. So as much as we can, we're in those school zones and other, their speeding complaints that we have around the city doing that enforcement education.
How many are in the traffic?
So we have two supervisors, two sergeants, we have eight motorcycle officers, we have four car positions, if you will, so not motors, and then we have five accident investigators.
Is it feasible to have increased, if we want to increase across all school zones during certain times?
We can move, we can move some of those officers. But the issue we have, especially during the warmer climates, is those same officers are also working the morning school zones as well as the street races. So it's, it's a matter of, I mean, ultimately it's a matter of resources, yes. Placing those, trying to, trying to put those in places we think are going to happen as well as accommodating for time off and vacations and all those other, other pieces.
Pier Street in front of the sports center where it turns 20 miles an hour because of Betty Adams. I was going 20 and I thought I was going to get rear ended and he laid on his horn and I begged one of you to be there because he was at least going 450. Could have had a good fight. And I've offered the shirt in green flashing lights that we don't need anymore, that can be repurposed. Any other questions?
So is this, I don't know, approve the expenditures of $60,000 to follow the two recommendations that the city staff is making? So second, or third bullet, recommend a pedestrian activated RFB cost 40. And then the next one, recommend RFB at the west side of Otis intersection. So pretty good with that?
Is there anybody that's not okay with it?
I mean, if we can make it cheaper by using existing.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
I have a request for a break.
Ten minutes, ma'am.
In fact, so the shadow.
Okay, just for those watching, if you've seen that I've unnormally been on my phone tonight, I had a grandson that was taken to the hospital as I was coming here tonight at 4:30. So anyway, he's fine, he's home, but I promised his mom I would be watching for a text from her. So I have seen two of them, so I know how he is, and so that's why I've been on my phone. Um, next up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors. Are we, everything good, working good, okay? So the next portion of this is adjustments that the council wants to make through the through the proposed budget as we we have established a process similar to, you know, what we've used previously in other discussions. But you know, someone who is going to make a motion to make a change, someone who seconds it, staff, you know, provides pros, cons, and a recommendation, council discusses, and then the mayor seeks direction from, you know, four or more members of the council on that particular topic. So that system works pretty, pretty well moving forward. But we are also happy to answer any questions, if there are still any looming questions. We fielded a whole lot of questions, and we certainly have, have answered those and provided those to the council. I know Councilor Azadi had some, some topics that he might like to discuss, so we could certainly answer questions. But if there are no questions, then it's really a, a matter of any adjustments to the, to the budget. But Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, and you know, as the question comes forward, I'll pull staff up as appropriate to answer questions or provide pros and cons.
One thing I couldn't find in here, and so I don't know where to look, is the memberships were member up. Like the Chamber, CML, NLC, AC Rab, Jeffco, EDC.
So we don't have, we don't have those membership by membership listed within the budget document. You're, you're accurate. If you'd like a list, we can prepare that to share with City Council.
Is that buried inside each of the departments that are affected by that particular membership?
There are a few that are like that. Most of those reside within central charges within the contractual category, which is what that shows up as in the, in the budget document. And there, we have an, we have an account underneath that that has those citywide memberships.
If you could just shoot us what, where we're at, whom we're with, that'd be great. Mayor Pro Tem.
First, just because I actually had, and you shared the answer to this, but I did have a member of the public ask me about, they were looking to make sure that we continued our membership with the Chamber, and it was shared with me that that is in the economic development budget. Our membership of $15,000 in the year. Because they couldn't find it, so they, the question was posed to me, I would pull now the Chamber, which I did not think we were, but I wanted to make sure that the public understands, because I know that, I'm sure that member of the public is listening tonight. But with that said, last week I did ask about cutting down the increase to the water rate half, so I don't know, then I would formulate for us to look at that for all the reasons I mentioned last time, and, and look at backfilling the Lowell project from the general fund, which is the project when I asked if you only did will be the half of the rate that you said, so I think like 2.25 would be half of what you asked for. What would has to be taken away, and you had mentioned Lowell project. And so instead of taking it away, my desire is to still cut the rate in half, but then to backfill that near $20,000 from the general fund.
Is there a second from the council that is interested in splitting the, the water rates from 4.5% 2024 to 2.25%?
I'm bored with that. What did we vote on last Monday?
I thought we were going to look at options.
We said we wanted them to come back with how it looks, options.
We provided that in the staff report back to the council on Thursday. The notes from that question. And I've got Public Works Director, Utilities Director, excuse me, I'm going to certainly answer that. But that was answered in our staff responses. Anytime we do your post meeting questions, we always follow that up. Could you send that out to the council?
Absolutely. So thank you for the question, interim director of Public Works and Utilities, Sarah Boarders. I have with me Brian Donahue from Policy and Budget, along with our city, interim city engineer Seth Plus. And so that's a great question. It results in the first year and just under a million dollars worth of shortfall for the utility if we decide to pull back that rate increase by half. What staff has shared is that if we wanted to backfill those dollars from the general fund, that that would, that would likely be coming from our street maintenance budget. That's about the only place we could find a million dollars in the general fund. We've got specific questions. Brian can talk a little bit about what happens by cutting that in half and not backfilling it, so I might ask Brian to check it out.
So if you think about a rate revenue adjustment down to 2.5%, rate really have a compounding effect over time. That is to say, that first year of revenue loss would be about 980K, but then over time, that number increases. So year two, that number will grow to 1.0 million, and so on. So after 10 years, that revenue lost would equal $12 million. And in all out years, that revenue would be lost. This would certainly impact project construction for the 24th, 25th, CIP. Cities also currently proposing a transfer of $5 million of general fund and ARPA funds in 2024.
In the budget.
In 2024. This is kind of a layover from '22. That total was $15 million transferred from the general fund in years '22 through '24, and these transfers have certainly helped manage rate increases over that time. Staff also proposed to spread out the $15 million transfer to limit Tabor implications. Transferring additional general revenue, general fund revenue could cause the facility to exceed its Tabor limit. So just another consideration.
Could or would? I mean, it's a very specific ask, so I would want to know that either it's going to or not, because that was one of the things I asked, understanding that there is a cap from the, what the general fund can put into the utility per Tabor.
Unfortunately, sorry, it's Matthew Mancha, Assistant City Attorney. If I'm understanding the question properly, essentially what we're dealing with here is, to what extent can we backfill the utility in order to sort of reduce water rates? Am I, am I understanding the topic of discussion properly?
You know, there's, there's a, we can only have 10% of our revenue be from general fund. So.
Yeah, and of course, the first obstacle we get to, but I imagine this is already discussed, is Section 14.6 of the Charter is, is pretty on point on this, in simply saying that the, what you're talking about, you can do any number of things to manipulate when it comes to capital expenditures, but when it comes to water rates for the utility, 14.6 is, is very clear. Those rates have to be fixed to at least meet the operating costs of the utility. So they're really right there, general fund revenue to just backfill or lower water rates.
It's, it's pretty. I want to push back on that a little bit, because if you, and I've read this, and I mean, we obviously are doing that to some extent with our budget. So I mean, I, I read that, and I'm not the attorney, and I need to question you in your, your profession, but if I read that, I read it as the, the intent that I hear in the Charter is that we have to have a sustained utility. Not necessarily that we're trying to hinder and say that you can't use your general fund dollars from that. Just more like you have to have a sustained utility, so therefore your rate should be set as such. I don't, I mean, there's nothing in there to say, and so I mean, to me, you're, you're deciding or we're deciding what it means by saying that that doesn't mean that you couldn't take from the general fund. Tabor is very specific about that, that you can only take X amount from your general fund, that 10%. Our charter says, you know, that you will sustain the charter, at least that's the way I read it. So I mean, because if, if that's a violation, then so is what, what we're doing with the ARPA dollars.
I think I could speak to that at this point. Let me just jump in, Mr. Lindsey. Thank you so much. I think ultimately, in the big picture, that the City Council could undertake what's on the floor. Right now, it might need to scrounge one year or another, because as Mr. Donahue pointed out, this would be a change in the rate and the revenue stream to the water utility indefinitely, you know, over, well, indefinitely. And so if in that first year, due to these general fund transfers, that needed to leapfrog over a couple of years, I'm quite confident that that could be accomplished under the Charter and under Tabor very easily. So it really comes back to the fundamental question at hand, and I could go through the math and talk about the years and things, but it really comes back to the fundamental question at hand is, is it the desire of the council to reduce the street maintenance line by a comparable amount over those years, or some other line that's the desire of council, and use those funds to pay for capital of a water utility? I think it, it's, there's no sense getting off course based on the Tabor question or the Charter question, in my opinion.
And, and so with that being said, if we go back to a lot of discussions, there was, at least for me, and I can only speak for me, not for the rest of council, there was a desire to say four and a half is the ceiling. That doesn't necessarily mean that you're going to get four and a half every year, at least not, you won't get a vote for it, I mean, just because. That's saying I won't consider anything over four and a half percent. And I understand that we're not even hitting the cost of inflation. However, I think that the residents still are in a position where, you know, things are painful right now. And so, you know, some increase makes sense to me. But when I look at that and think, I'm having a hard time following, saying, okay, we, you know, set this arbitrary, understanding it's arbitrary, because a majority of council could at any time say something different, four and a half percent, to then year one, go straight to that four and a half percent is, is difficult for me. And I think the exercise should always be, as a, as a city, that we look at that and say, you know, what else can we do? Our residents are having to tighten their belt. I know that we are actually having to do the same thing. But in, in terms of, of water rates, I sure would like to see us do something other than, you know, what I consider the maximum that I would allow. And I certainly heard that from other members of the council, as we sat in this room the last time we had this conversation, as far as what you were proposing. And so, you know, that's kind of why I have this desire to, to do something else. Understanding some, something has to give, there is a give and take, but, you know, this is something that certainly is going to impact every single resident who is a ratepayer in the city.
Just, if I could, a question that I think is relevant, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, if Mr. Donahue may be able to help us understand this. But the modeling that you've done to predict, you know, amount of borrowing that the city has to do to build a water treatment facility plant, continue to, you know, operate the water utility, and oh, by the way, do all the other capital projects, that modeling has been built on a model of 4.5% for the next 10 years. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
And so if you start to change that increase, then that throws off that modeling to some degree. I'm sure you could figure it out, but for me, just to some degree, as far as how much we would have to borrow over time in order to make that work, and then how much money would be available each year to be able to meet our needs.
That's absolutely correct.
So I think that's an important consideration, is when you tweak a percent increase on water rates.
I understand what you're saying, but that wasn't my understanding. We, I thought we were solid with where we were to be able to bond, as well, understanding that things change. Because if, if, if that's the case, and it is carbon block, you get four and a half every, every year, and that's not what I would have agreed to. Or at least certainly didn't think that's what I was agreeing to.
Yeah, but the understanding that, so when we went through that modeling, what, the way I, the way I understood it was as they're saying, which is 10 years out, but after 10 years, everything was red, real red. So, and then we talked about cash flow capacity and how we're at the peak. Larry, you've said that before, where we're we are, the four, so it's my understanding that 4.5% was necessary, but still not even enough because of it's very short-term thinking, where it's 10 years out, we're good, but after 10 years, it was all red.
I don't see this short-term thinking, though. I thought the understanding was that we go through that 10-year thing all the time. Most organizations do, school districts do, we do. I mean, you didn't seem to have a problem with it going to red in 10 years, so that was a rebalance, which is going to have to happen no matter what. But to me, this is important enough that I might vote no on the budget. So if everybody else is comfortable with it, cool, I'll have to think about it.
One clarification. Were you asking for it to continue 2.5% for two years or just this?
Just this year. To me, this is going to be something that we do every year. You, you will not get just 4.5% out of me, just because there, there are options and decisions that the city can make throughout time to balance our budget. Or we could decide that 4.5% over the next 10 years is what we want to do every year. I'm not comfortable with that. But what I'm saying is, this year, let's not do 4.5%. Next year, let's talk about it and see if we can come to 4.5%.
So with the proposal on the table, you know, we have that model that we're all alluding to, and I would think it would be helpful for the whole council to understand what that impact is with the model. If it is for one year, and then, I don't know, do you assume 4.5% or something for the remaining nine years out or something? Because that's that's what we're looking at. I think that's what the question is right now.
So the year-end, the long-term impacts of the 2.5%?
Be 2.5% with for 2024, and then I guess you'd have to assume, you know, 4.5 for the remainder to see how that impacts our.
So all out years and year-term years are set at 4.5% increases. If you were to lower that to 2.5% for 2024, revenue loss first year would be 980K, let's say. Over that next 10-year period, that cumulative loss is 12 million.
So you're only looking at one year.
The first year is, the first year is 2024, 2024 would be about 580K. The compounding effect of rates, the next year would be about 1.0 million, and so on. So the third year might be 1.1 million, so over a 10-year period.
Maybe, yeah, and another way of saying that is if we reduce 2.5% this year, then when we look at the out year, we're short 12.5 million if we make no other changes. So it just makes that, that kind of red part of the graph move forward more quickly.
What would be the average savings to a resident if we reduced it to 2.5% on the water bill?
What would be the compounding savings over 10 years? I mean, that's, that's the problem with what we do. The problem, and that's always been the problem with what we do, is you're talking about it comparing to us, and I understand that. But we need to look at the other side of the dime. That, that year-over-year increase to our residents, that's compounding there too. And that is certainly something that we've heard from the community, and something I've brought up in the past. And so that's, that's my same concern on the other, other side of it. So, you know, and at, at some point, you can't always just, like, there is operating expense, and I understand that goes up, but we can't control that. You know, what, what things cost, we don't control that. But we do control how we spend those dollars, and we do control, to some extent, how efficient we are with those dollars. And I feel like if we don't do these kind of exercises, we don't, and I'm not saying that doesn't, don't do all those things, but it certainly is more of an incentive if we're saying, we're going to be serious about scrutinizing that, that increase every year. And, and if we're just going to say it's 4.5% every year, then we're not scrutinizing it. We're just saying that 4.5% was that 4.5% is what it is, and, and I'm, I'm not willing to do that.
But so, thanks for your comments, but that was a real question to ask for, for staff, like, what's the average savings? I'm curious to know that. Because if we're only doing this for one year, then what are we saving residents for that year?
And I could participate in this too. As I remember the model, the model was based on an assumption of $24 million of ongoing capital expense each year. And when we based the model with the assumption of $12 million of capital investment project each year, it was in the black forever, wasn't it?
The one single project to do a water line replacement will cost us $12 million. So 100.
But it's based on an assumption we made, and if you make a different assumption, you'll get a completely different result. That's why we have to constantly, as Mayor Pro Tem said, update from the real costs we experience. So I mean, just a he has a worthy question, we just can't.
Sure, but I still have that question that would like answered. I understand what you're saying, but I think if we want to make a decision on this, and this actually helps you, Mayor Pro Tem, if we know, well, what are we saving residents? I'd like to know what that answer is for staff.
And I'm okay with giving that answer, but we'll say that whenever we, we, as a city, try to come up with the average savings, we've missed the mark. And that's, I don't, I hate to sound critical, but when we, as a city, passed rates in 2018 saying, oh, this is average, going to just cost somebody, you know, $10 a month. That's not what people saw. People saw extraordinary water increases. I don't think this is what we're dealing with today, but I have become a little bit cynical when we talk about what the average savings is.
Well, I, there's a couple of things. One, we did restructure the tiers a bit, so I think a lot of people have been saving. I know I have been over the past year. And so I'd be curious to know, you know, we haven't had as much of an increase in requests for assistance as I thought we might. Maybe that's due to the restructuring of the tiers, but just kind of understanding the situation a little bit better, of knowing how many people are still significantly impacted versus not. And then I would also want to look at how does the cost of water and the impact on households and, and our residents concerns for that weigh against streets or other high priority things, that services that are, are fundamental services for the city? Because that's, our core services is kind of where it's often going to, you know, it's such a big number, it's going to hit our core services somewhere else. So while potentially, we can't, I mean, we do have input from our 2022 survey. I think also just continuing to get input from our community members through the 2024 survey as well. It's not going to help us at this very moment, but to have that iterative conversation about, how are you doing with your water bill? How are you doing with your expectations and judgment of our other core service provisions? So that we can balance that when we know, because the cost of more affordable water, there is one, and we need to be clear and transparent with the community as to what that is.
Yeah, so obviously, council absolutely has the option of not choosing to go forward with a 4.5%. What I can say with some certainty, if we decide to do that, we are cutting real legitimate projects that are necessary for the sake of keep of our utility. Lowell Boulevard Pipeline is just one up on 120th Avenue. We've got the, the pipeline that keeps flowing up in the middle of the road and causing traffic implications right there in front of Avaya. There, there starts to become very real CIP impacts for not going to 4.5%. Lowell Boulevard was our, our first, like, what if this is a one-year thing? The compounding issue of not achieving 4.5% will become more substantial as years go by, if we can't keep up at 4.5% to keep up with inflation.
Any bills? Put your druthers.
I am basically like in favor of Mayor Pro Tem.
What are we in favor of?
What's the motion that's on the table? It's a key, key point.
You wanted to look at it?
Look at what?
Look at, look at the impact of this reducing it to 2.25% increase instead of a 4.5% increase.
Mayor, if I could, if I could just. A motion to look at it, Mayor Pro Tem?
What's the motion?
Yes. Mayor, I could interject real quick. So the original ask from the mayor was, or from the Mayor Pro Tem was to, you know, what would be the effect if we cut the increase in half from 4.5 to 2.25%? Everybody keeps saying 2.5, 2.25%. We responded in our, one of our previous correspondence, I've lost track of which one. But the, the answer from the staff was, if we were going to do that, that would cost about $980,000 in 2024. How would you offset, what would that mean to the budget? And the answer was, we wouldn't do the Lowell Water Main Replacement Project, okay? And so that was the first answer that was given, which then has a trickling effect over time. Not only does it affect, over a 10-year period, you lose $12 million in revenue compounded for that one year's worth of reduction. 10 years later, you're $12 million short of what you would have had. But more importantly, we then asked the question of, okay, got it, I don't, I'm not really comfortable canceling out on Lowell, because it keeps breaking, et cetera. So then last meeting, you asked if we subsidized the water utility with, call it a million dollars of general fund money to offset that. And the staff came back and said, you know, again, you can do that. If we were going to do that, we would take that from our street's maintenance budget, a million dollars is a big chunk of change. And so, you know, you can defer, you cannot do Lowell in one year, in 2024, and defer that to a future year, 2025, which has a trickling effect over time. That's one answer. That keeps it all in the utility. Just a reminder to everybody, the water utility is an enterprise fund, it runs like a business, we charge rates for the cost of doing business. You know, we're not there to make big money, right? And so, I mean, it is what it is. And so you can kick projects down the road, and one of our, you know, projects has been, or one of our priorities has been, to maintain infrastructure and not get behind over time. So that's kind of one line of thought. The other line of thought is, is using general fund dollars to, you know, essentially replace that million dollars in lost revenue in the water utility. And you can certainly do that, but when you look, when the staff looks at where do you take that money from? Well, then you take that out of the general fund, we would propose the street maintenance budget. And if you look at what the community said in 2022, what's the most important thing behind public safety? It's maintaining our streets. And so it's not a really good answer. And oh, by the way, it has that compounding effect. And so I don't think that either option really gives you a good way forward, I really don't. I mean, it's a novel idea. I will tell you, as I came on board the city here 10 months ago, and, you know, started to try and understand, you know, where we're at with water rates, you know, I know that our water rates, we've reduced water rates. And so you use less, you pay less, I get that, you know, but at, at the end of the day, those Um, and so you use less, you pay less, I get that, um, you know, but at at the end of the day, those water rates have to cover our costs and they, you know, four, four and a half percent. For the next ten years, frankly, um, at least in the near term, you know, is not even inflation, right? We're not even keeping up with inflation, I think that's an important reality. Um, you know, if we're not raising rates by inflation, you know, we're gonna have to give up somewhere, and four and a half percent for ten years is frankly probably a pretty good deal. I hate to say that publicly, I'm sure there are those in the community that would disagree with that, but, you know, any rate increase less than inflation over ten years is a good deal. Especially when you're trying to run a business, I know that, you know, anyone that would be running a business in our community would say they couldn't run their business like that. Um, but we're able to, and we make it work, um, so I don't think any of the proposals on the table are really good ones, it's a question for you all, but again. Um, you know, we need to have a defined motion, which is, I propose we reduce the uh water rates by two and uh two, two point two five percent. And the way that I propose that we offset that is by doing X, someone second said, the uh staff provides pros and cons, the council debates, the council votes. And the leader sinks your swings.
I don't disagree with anything you said, the only thing that I find extremely frustrating. Um, and I did kick it back at staff to say, what would your recommendation be? But if I were to take money from the general fund because we are running a business, it certainly wouldn't have been from the streets, it would have been from some of the shit, excuse my language, but that we've talked about here tonight. Some of the nonprofit stuff, some of the things that are not core services to a city, um, and that is what I find frustrating. Because we are running a business, but we have very specific things as a business we need to do, we need to provide public safety, we need to provide safe streets and transportation. And we need to provide water that people can afford and that is clean to drink, and so that is why I'm having a hard time with this. And I do think at some point, we need to, and I understand everything with inflation, the whole world's getting hit with that, and I don't know the fix for it, it certainly isn't gonna be solved in the city of Westminster. But um, how are we trying to tighten our belt in order to meet the demands of what people have to have, which is water? People have to have that, um, and so, you know, providing that in a way that's affordable is very, very important to me. Um, right up there with providing public safety, which again, those are, those are our four things, that's what we should be focusing on, so that's, you know. I I don't disagree taking it from the streets, that's not really a good option for me. Um, but at some point, we have to force this conversation, it's a hard conversation to have.
And if I could, the, I think the reason that the staff defaults to uh streets is, is that we've increased the streets budget over the last two years significantly. And so, you know, if there's a place where you can go after without affecting the rest of the budget, where have you put new money these last two years? It's been in streets, and so taking a million dollars out of streets, you know, doesn't put us worse off than we were in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty two. I think that's a fair place for the staff to go after, um, you know, does it satisfy our community survey data? No, um, do I think that's the right thing to do? No, um, but, you know, again, it's not my decision, um, and so, you know, the motion on the table needs to be. What is it that you want us to reduce, or correction to add, you know, in this case, and what do you want us to reduce?
Council Baker?
Yeah, uh, really, one of the options that I haven't heard in pursuit of is, is there like efficiencies in our really utility department? Where we can save a million dollars a year operationally? I mean.
We do our best every day to be as efficient as possible, um, every person, I think, working in the utility. Um, works hard every day, has a lot on their plate every day, um, they are our snowplow drivers, they are our. Uh, the people who fix the water mains on July first at two AM when it's ten degree outside, those are the guys that are in the utilities department. Um, and then in terms of budget, most of our budget is CIP, so when we talk about utilities budget, we're really not. So that's, that's the bulk of where uh utilities money goes, so if we start talking about reducing and needing defined space, we're really talking about what CIPs to be had.
I don't want to at all degrade the hard work that your department has done over the, you know, since this conversation has really become. Inflamed, I don't know a better way to put it, um, because I think that you've done miraculous things. And I think that, you know, some of the things that we've talked about over time is how do we pay for a water plant? Um, saved, you know, a hundred million dollars on rethinking it, and that's a lot of work and a lot of time spent. Um, you know, but unfortunately, we can't take the pressure off of that, I mean, I know, you know, and and I don't know how this equates in, I know we're trying to go after funding mechanisms that maybe are federally, you know, federal dollars. Um, and I hope that we're able to accommodate some of that, you know, but the question for me is, when does it hit the rates? And so maybe a, you know, maybe a better path forward, instead of trying to solve this, this nut tonight, is. If if we could as a, as a city, as an organization, say that instead of saying, okay, next year it's gonna be four and a half percent, we're gonna take the next twelve months. But we're gonna seriously look at that in a way to say, we're gonna have a goal to have that be less. And, you know, I'm open to what that goal is, but I am very serious about us, you know, doing all we can to not have four and a half percent every year. At least for the next two years that I'm sitting in one of these seats, that is gonna be one of my goals, so. If we can take that as a serious task for next year, I'm willing to drop this this year, I don't like it. I really wanted to come back and find some way to cut that, some meaningful way for the residents. Um, because even if it's not, to Counselor Azadi's point of what the savings is, I think it shows that we're serious about. About how we're spending these dollars, and I think that the public still isn't confident of that. Um, and I hear it in the conversations that I, that I have with people, um, especially this year as we we come up to an election. And in a, you know, I, in a, and the unfortunate thing is, a lot of the hard work we're just talking about is being lost in the conversation. Um, so I just don't want the public to think we're taking our foot off the gas, cause I certainly will not. Um, and so if the, the majority of council would rather not do that this year, what I would ask is that we set some sort of serious goal for next year.
I would like to second that, I like the idea of a year-long analysis, cost-free, so not, no consultants, right? If staff um can look at it for a year, that would be, so. I know you probably didn't mean it this way, Mayor Protem, but I don't think nonprofits and these, and human services are shit, but. Um, and I think, and I I think that we have done a lot as a council that we should be proud of, right? You, you spearheaded a lot of the changes we already have made to reduce rates and change the tier structure. I think half of the issue was the public don't, like, they don't really even know what we've done, because we don't communicate it very well, right? Those changes are not widely known, that's one thing, but the second thing is, you're right. If one of our roles as a city council is to make sure, it's a strategic priority of ours, quality of life, right? Affordability of water is a quality of life issue, and we should look at it, so I I would second that.
Can I just, um, I'll just continue to ask that we look at it from the opposite direction as well? And for uh, so not cutting all the rates for everybody, so I feel like there's households that can absorb the increases. Um, and there's households that are way more stressed by um limited or fixed incomes, and so. I would also just have us look at where's the actual need in terms of keeping people housed, and do we need to expand upon it? There may be some income limitations, I don't know, on our requests for uh assistance for paying water bills. Um, and, and or are there discounts, I know that'll get back to. City Attorney Frankel, he'll slap my hand, but, you know, for um, for certain households regarding uh their age, fixed income, their sort of, their, their income status. And so just to look at it from there, because it may just be a um, a finer tuned approach than everything.
And hopefully that analysis will should look at all of these things.
Yeah.
Counselor Emmons?
I guess I'm just frustrated by the whole process, um, and not by staff, but through all of us, um, just because. My intent or my understanding was through the process that we went through with staff was that. Uh, it never was, it never was a, and sure, looking into the future, it's always a guesstimate. Um, but I believe that the intent was always to be around four point five percent, given the numbers that we were looking at, the cost. And what we would need was was coming in at about four point five percent. I understand that we look at this on a yearly basis and that it may not always have to be four point five percent. But months ago, or a month ago, when we went through this process with uh through our budget retreat session. Um, we all gave the go-ahead, our majority gave the go-ahead to four with what, four point five percent to produce a budget, and so. Um, I I appreciate looking at two point five percent, two point two five percent. Um, but then this goes back to, okay, so then this is, if I were staff, I'd say, okay, find more than. Uh, find more than a million dollars, um, that's on council, like, I feel like that's on council to give staff recommendations as far as. What are we going to cut in order to make a million dollars, or what are we gonna cut to reduce, to be able to meet two point two five percent? If we can make two point two five five percent, I would love it, uh, but this goes back to to Counselor Baker's point as far as, let's see where we can cut ten percent. Arbitrary number, cut ten percent, but then that means that we're cutting out. I, if we were ha, if we're having a a strong conversation about cutting out nonprofits, then let's, let's have that conversation. Uh, or diving deeper in, cause this is our policy, this is our budget, this is where we have our fingers on it and make the most decisions. Then staff executes from there on a yearly basis, and so if we're looking at two point two five percent, I say, let's start cutting right now. I just, I'm, I'm, I don't understand how, how we're looking at a two point two five process right now. When we gave a go-ahead to move forward. So.
Because after we left here, there's reflection, we get numbers days before we see them, and then we approve them. When I'm frankly, when we feel like, well, this is our option, and we weren't given other options. So at least for me, I went back and looked, how are other ways to crack this nut? Because it's that important to me, and frankly, this is the first time we've been able to really have a good conversation around general fund, which is something I've brought up since. The day I joined council and we started talking about water rates in twenty eighteen, which we have a lot of different faces since then. But I'm glad we can at least have this conversation, cause before it was no, can't do that period, which I knew you could do it. You can by Taker do it, we could by our charter do it, and I was always told, no, you can't. So I'm glad at least we get to have this conversation, but the reason I push forward with this is because. We have that budget, we got to reflect, this is all part of our process, to your point, this is part of our process here today, we get to have these conversations.
So if we're looking for two point five, two point two five reduction, then what, what are we bringing to the table to make that reduction?
I believe right now the motion on the floor was that I withdrew that, and that I wanted to seriously look at it next year, that four and a half percent isn't what we're gonna do. That we as an organization are gonna be serious about having something else come back next year in a way that is sustaining and long-lasting and. Shows the public that we're, we're taking that task serious.
City Manager Pryte.
Yes, and if I could share with the council, um, for Mayor Protem and Counselor Azadi, uh, regarding a, a year-long look at. Um, how we could reduce that rate increase and come back um next budget season with uh, um, you know, some recommendations. Um, I'm, I'm willing to sign up for that to be one of my city manager annual goals for the year, I think that would be very appropriate. I'm happy to do that, I'm happy to lead the the staff through that, um, but I think that's a, um, that's a reasonable request and certainly something that's reasonable for us. We're not gonna figure that out today, and we probably wouldn't make a good decision today, but I, I think that, uh, you know, that I could lead the staff through that process. Um, and we could come back with some better options for the council to consider next year, so I'll put that on the table.
Um, and Sarah, did I see your hand? Um. Water is, we have to have it to live, and we cannot be unmonopoly. Everybody needs to be able to afford it. It is right there with fire and police to me as a core. We have other things in our budget, see, I I wouldn't automatically make it, it has to come out of streets, no, that's core. We have some other areas, um, that when you look at things, because it's the whole budget. Core should be first, placed first, and I don't like saying, then what's rest for the rest, but. These things have to be done. Um, the thing that I don't know how to do from your talk about then. The compounding, so that's what I'm not sure how to get to with my thinking tonight. But I I could give some examples of what I see in here. Um. That either half could be done now and half later on some projects that are a good amount, more than a million. Um, and so for me, that would be easy, because it's the whole budget we look at. I don't expect you to take from something that is absolutely, has to be. In the budget and at a, an affordable price, and then expect you to take it from something that is also in streets. Um, a top priority, so. I look at the whole budget, and that's where I come up with where some things could be taken. And uh, and I think it's up to the city manager to say to some of those folks, um, if that's the way it works for whatever that's core. Uh, this is what we have to put in this, uh, the city hasn't done roads for some time. Uh, we, you can see um how the money hasn't been spent, so between that and water. Um, that, that's key infrastructure, we're either, we're either gonna keep going backwards or we start moving forward. And when you do that, sometimes you can't do everything, and there's some other everythings in here. That would be very easy for me to say, these things could be put on hold a little bit, but it's the compounding piece. That I don't know how to get to, so um, that's where I'm at, sorry, I just had spoken in today, um, Mayor Protem.
Really, to those points, I, as much as I like this to go differently, I do think this is actually more meaningful and probably harder to do. Because the hope would be that it's more of a longstanding process that can continue year to year, and so. Being able to challenge ourselves and say, how can we do this before next year, is something I would hope could continue down the road. Um, so in a lot of ways, it's a better option, it may not be more uh immediately accepted. Um, or felt by the public, but I think to all the points we've heard about where we're at in ten years, it's probably the better exercise.
Counselor Tyler?
I would just again, for this year-long analysis is focused on the outcome that we're striving for and the why we're actually asking for this and why. Like, and let that be a guide and to not. Um, do more than what we need to do. Uh. Yeah, that's, and and I think focusing on that outcome will do the, do that trick.
What's next?
That's it, Mayor.
Anybody have any other? Oh, oh, do you feel like your stuff has been answered?
No, I got a lot, you want me to just go through, or how do you want me to?
Let's start with number one.
I just wanna start with number one and and we'll go through them, I'll call it staff as appropriate.
And of course, all of these are, in my opinion, core, because we have a strategic priority of quality of life. And yes, water rates matter a lot, which is why we're gonna be, we will be looking at this, but there are other areas. But there are other areas of people's lives that are also necessary um that are not being addressed and that could be addressed. So I'll just go through them one by one. Um, and get everyone's thoughts. First one is to establish a food security fund. I think we've all heard, we've all seen, um, there's a lack of access to affordable, healthy food options in the city and that, you know, there've been articles about this recently. And over the last couple of years, several years, situation's gotten worse. And the way you define a food desert is very specific. So we do have grocery stores, but it depends on how close they are, how accessible transportation is, et cetera. Um, so I would like to see us do something where maybe, and we know there are nonprofits like Growing Home who who's looking into this and the city has been working with Growing Home, to my understanding, city manager since, it's been over a year now since I brought this up last summer. Um, I'm curious where that is, but I know there are other nonprofits who would like to help. Uh, but everything comes down to, well, can we get a grant? Can we get some kind of subsidy from the city? Can the city help in some way? I think we should, so I could read the whole thing again. The paragraph just sort of the public knows what I submitted. So I said, all all residents deserve access to affordable, healthy food options. Allocate funds to create a food security fund that will provide grants and subsidies to local initiatives aimed at improving food accessibility and affordability. This will help in our ongoing partnership with nonprofits to expand their reach and cap and capabilities and provide us the opportunity to offer grants to local food producers to set up stands in identified food deserts for more accessible fresh produce and our ability to subsidize community garden projects and mobile markets that can bring fresh produce to areas with limited access to stores.
Um, would you like to, in this for the council, would you like to hear kind of a staff response to that? Or do you want to go through at this point, you know, what's the ask, money? What's the, what's the give up? What are you willing to give up? And then as a staff, what what's your preference?
That was what you think.
I'd like the money asked and what wants to give up.
What's the money asked and what do you want to give up?
I think we can start with a hundred thousand in this fund, create this fund as a grants fund. And I would propose it comes in the general fund.
We're in the general fund, I mean, we're going to need to be more specific than that because, you know, that means police, it means fire, it means streets, it means general government. Any particular place you want to take the money from?
I ask a question, Anthony.
Um, so a couple of things. One, for the human services grants, like there's a certainly a an overlap with this request. So maybe there's some refinement around that. But I also am wondering about our CDBG funds and is there any opportunity? Because I know we had some additional funds, you know, uh, to do a carve out there.
Before that was here.
The access was?
I feel like that was a hundred thousand or something if we were going to put it towards tree replacement.
We are Emerald Ash for tree removal, not replacement removal for those that are um low income that can't afford the thousand dollars that it takes to to remove a tree. Citywide.
So, it was just a thought for an ongoing.
Can we repurpose CDBG? If it's a fund that state, that citywide, like that, doesn't have to be.
It's already been done for this year.
And I think that's the important piece, you know, with all these is what's the ask and what's the what's the payer, if you will? What's the ease for that addition, as I explained in my emails? You know, again, it comes back to, at the end of the day, it's got to be zero. So if you add a cost for a food food security fund, which I get, and there are a lot of people in the, I do. Um, not a core service, as I explained, it's not one of those basic things we do. But nice to do, and if you can do it, great. Um, but but who's the bill payer for the hundred thousand dollars? Where does that come from?
Mayor Proten?
Um, I'm going to be a no on on moving anything at this point, uh, no matter who asks. Because to me, we couldn't just do what move dollars, there weren't dollars to cover what is a core service without taking away from another core service. So uh, I'm I'm pretty much, if if I'm going to vote yes on this budget, it is what it is at this point for me.
I think the water fund is different because of how it how it's structured. Where we can't do much with water fund. We can only do that without going over caps.
But the cap wasn't the problem. The problem is taking money out of the general fund and not being able to backfill it at the level I was asking.
Azadi, explain to me what the the s- security fund would do with the hundred thousand and how it's going to help people.
It would be a grant mechanism that a nonprofit could request grants from to to help, uh, so whether, so like I said in here, so whether it's a garden project or a mobile market or uh helping local food producers set up stands in different areas that 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 don't have grocery. So it would basically help subsidize other organizations to do more investments there.
Living to food.
Have we asked any of the farmers markets to come down into historic Westminster? Or anyplace else? I know they are off of Ninety-S sixth and Sheridan and they're up at the orchard. But I know some churches that have invited them in. So have we done any of that invitation? And that doesn't cost a dime.
I can't answer that. If by show of hands, does any staff, any knowledge about farmers markets in the historic Westminster? I do not, Mayor, but maybe someone else does.
Also, what's the update with Growing Home? That was a year ago. I, the city was supposed to be working with them for on something, but I never heard what came out of that.
Ms. Trawler, would you like to come up?
It's Stephanie Trawler, economic.
Well, go.
Resiliency manager, economic department. I am as part of the Seventy-third and Mole Open Air Market. We did conduct a feasibility study for local um farmers markets in the area. There is one, uh, there's a church, I believe, a hundred and twelve, I believe, I can't remember, right? I have me, hundred nineteen, hundred nineteen, thank you. And there is another one on the on the northwest side of town. Um, but there is nothing in historic Westminster as far as farmers markets go.
Have we asked for them to come down?
Um, as we, we will be asking as part of the Seventy-third and Mole uh project that we hope to go out for RFP this, before the end of the year for the activation of that corner.
Because, can I ask? Um, is the MAC open on Saturdays?
Uh, not for regular hours as we move towards the addition of the pickleball. Sorry, I'll go forward.
I'm just thinking of parking. They, you have a good parking lot, but we could have in a corner, have the farmer's market there.
Sorry, I didn't get the first hand way though. Uh, Tim Long, my recreation service manager. So currently, the MAC is not open on Saturdays. We do special events there or rentals for weddings. So that's uh the utilization of space right now.
Okay, sorry, I just.
No, it's okay. Um, I have the staff that have been working with Growing Home. Uh, we did conduct a feasibility study. Um, unfortunately, there weren't a lot of really great recommendations um about uh on how to make it more feasible, other than maybe a mobile market of some sort. Um, their staff is also pretty stressed. We are trying to work through those options as we speak. Um, and I'm happy to provide those updates once we have them. But is that they are a little limited on their staffing as well. Um, so other than a mobile market and and actually figuring out the feasibility and if that can happen.
And how's the community guards?
There is, uh, Maker has a few community gardens in the area.
Thank you, Growing Home has a lot of delivery.
Yeah, um, they they actually, I believe, serve their their food factory.
So we we are doing things and continue to find things to to grow. Um, is the garden that's across the railroads, um, yeah, is that just long?
Primarily is.
Do we, I know the original ask from Growing Home was to have fifty thousand dollars to go towards an analysis on how to get better food access in the southern portion of the city. Uh, so assuming we didn't go, I don't know how robust of a uh an L.
Um, I'm happy to share that with city council, if that is if your desire. Um, it, we ended up spending fifteen thousand dollars and it was a fair robust um feasibility study on how they looked at the data, they looked at how to attract another grocery store. They looked at food co-ops. They looked at a variety of different options on how to make food uh more accessibility. Those options really did, there there was no financial feasibility to those. So there the next year is looking at the mobile markets, uh, food delivery services and other transportation. The challenges that the study found is that matching transportation with people's speeds who are, you know, perhaps they are a working mom that can't beat the 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 transportation schedule. So is how to get groceries in real time, um, delivery services or mobile work, mobile food services, which is what we're exploring right right now to figure out in Kansas City at the Compton Center and trying to figure out the.
Did anybody go visit GoPuff?
Um, gentlemen, that that would be the delivery service. But I think if if you are, um, the, this is, you know, kind of a, my observation is that if you are part of the delivery services is how you would subsidize the delivery fees, which sometimes if you are the cup, the, excuse me, income limited, that can limit your income more than these or that they are, that seem to be the issue.
If if transportation seems to be the issue, is it not um expanding the VIA service to a flex ride service so that, I mean, there are people who walk from um Eaton Street, uh, the Eaton Street Apartments in downtown Westminster. They walk over a mile over to Walmart just to get groceries because they don't have a car. So, and we also know that there are a lot of, that's one example, but obviously there are a lot of um, uh, households in the southern portion of the city that have older residents that don't also drive and have therefore a limited access. So how, instead of, I know currently, I think the VIA is only for seniors right now. So how do we expand that service to potentially? If if that's, you know, I want to be like targeted with this. And that's why I'd almost pick it the um, the approach to food access to be a little more targeted um with a recommendation from staff on what would that?
And that's the 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 answer, so I don't have. With that, working through those issues with Growing Home. And so we have to, either we probably need to do another feasibility study or take staff time to look at that. Um, and I'd like to get that.
Speaking of transportation, that was another item. Well, I I think naturally, if we do solve for the food desert, it it's it's naturally targeted because it's solving for the desert, not citywide. There aren't that many deserts in Westminster. There are enough of them that it's a problem for a lot of residents. But it's typically low income, right? It's typically folks that who don't have a car. It's already targeted just by the nature of it.
Well, so I would, I would argue that having smaller organizations that are just that have a food pantry is still not going to get people to the food unless there's some, like, you know, like, let's figure out what the, what the key issue is and I'm sure there's more. But what's the greatest impact that we can have? Uh, so I I don't know if grants is it versus, is it dollars?
Versus expanding the bi-mobility service, which is another item that I'd love to see happen. It's for seniors and this and 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 disabled.
Currently.
Currently. If we can expand, and to my, what's the demand right now? I think we said it's being used pretty.
I wouldn't be the person. No, that's specific.
Anyone in this room?
Seeing the question, I'm sorry, I I lost.
Bi-mobility services, the services for seniors and disabled, the transportation service.
Does anybody have any knowledge of those programs, mobility services, Mr. Downing?
Uh, Dave Dabbings, Director of Community Development. Um, yes, I have some knowledge on this. The immobility, uh, it is not being recommended for twenty twenty-four uh because of uh ridership. I would say borderline ridership numbers, I think have been shared with council a couple of times. I I do have that here if you're interested in it. Uh, also, uh, the funding will be reduced in twenty twenty-four. And the uh cost for the city was going to be uh something less than two hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred ninety.
Hundred ninety.
Hundred ninety thousand dollars for twenty twenty-four. The cost for the city. Yes, sir. Uh, what I have here is that was up to the end of July of this year. At that point, there were a hundred and nine trips for the month of July, one night's row with uh forty-five unique clients, sort of, otherwise, a few people are using it over and over again. Uh, that was down a little bit. It looked like through uh the, through the uh spring, it averaged more in the vicinity of two hundred and thirty trips.
What makes that low?
I believe we, why is it low?
Well, what, how do we, how how are we defining low? And what areas?
Uh, I believe the rough calculations uh came out to be something in excess of fifty dollars. So I guess it begs the question, is there some other way to provide uh provide the service at fifty to fifty-five dollars a trip?
That's like Uber.
But what area, what is the general uh area? For example, if those hundred and fifty people or trips, is that sixty, something unique? How many uni- units?
About uh forty-five.
Forty-five, are they all in one area? Are they low-income area?
No, they were all over the city.
So it's not, so we don't know if it's low. We're just saying the cost per is high.
That's correct.
That's very different.
That's correct. In VIA and Dr. Cog's world, it's considered uh at least average, at least average ridership. But again, just pointing out that I think it was working out to fifty-five dollars a trip.
And you cut that from the budget?
It's not included uh uh proposal for twenty twenty-four.
So there's forty-five people who obviously needed it, if they used it that that much. Got nothing?
They don't have VIA, so I'm not sure what they would afford yet.
Since we have a long list to go to, we had the food security with a grant of a hundred thousand. Is anybody interested moving that forward?
No.
We next have transportation. We've just heard VIA is not on the list. Are we okay with that?
Yes.
I'm not okay with that. Forty-five people who use that more than three times each.
Well, forty-five people could take RCD for a cost of two dollars. And actually, they can sign up using Uber and take them straight to and from for a cost of two dollars.
Assuming they live near, assuming they can get there.
What do you mean? Assuming, if they live in the district, they're eligible.
Well, they're not using it, they're using VIA. They're paying that much more because they don't know about the other.
So are you saying?
Maybe more people don't know about VIA.
Uber and get a two-dollar ride.
Yes, my mother-in-law is doing it right now. Two dollars, she can get an Uber ride.
Quite interesting, so.
Right.
Um, so how do you do that? Um, so how do you do that?
You just qualify like you do on via.
Through RTD?
Through RTD.
Sounds like we need to get some communication out on how to do that.
Yeah, we can like, if that's true.
It is.
That sounds too good to me, but then then we should be, then we should be communicating that.
Okay, so are we good if we communicate that?
Sure.
Okay, next.
Um, so currently I know we have some discounts for veterans and people with disabilities at our recreation centers. I'd like to increase those discounts.
Any particular ask for discounts and how do we offset that loss?
I'm not sure where it would come from.
Do we know how much we're subsidizing currently?
One out of ten.
Welcome.
Oh, it's Tim Long, my recreation service manager. Um, year-to-date through our programs that we offer, we've done about ninety thousand uh so far in in South Station. Um, I'd say normally we're in the hundred and twenty-five thousand for the entire year, but so far this year we're ninety thousand. That's through, we actually have a couple of our programs, either through scholarships that you get fifty percent discount, um, a reduced rate pass that uh allows you to come in and get fifty percent off of a pass. And it, or we also have a buddy program where if there's an individual that's in need, they have to have somebody to work out with them, the buddy gets in for free. So all those combined here today, we're about ninety.
Does that include our veterans?
Veterans, which we just started a few months ago, uh, that's about nine thousand here today. So combined, we're tool around a hundred thousand, but the veterans this year, so we'll have to see how that will go.
Aren't we already budgeted for next year continuing those?
Yeah, the um, the the scholarship and discount, we've been doing that for a long time. So if we do our revenue protection, put that into that, the veterans. I'm not really sure how that'll that'll fall out, so we'll have to kind of see what that looks like and then put that in whatever revenue protections for for 2024. Um, but certainly our larger scholarship and uh and reduced rate is built into that.
Definitely utilize the hundred thousand each year.
Yeah, so that's, that's an accumulation of the year what it's up to. We start at zero, it just depends on what we get up to and how many people come in and ask for that. Um, it could be, you know, more or less, just depending on what the utilization is for that program.
Do you allocate a hundred?
Usually we count on probably about a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then again, the veterans this year, so I'm not exactly sure how that will add to that. And I'd have to go back and look at what all the past years were. I know it generally, uh, I'm saying COVID, of course, you know, it's a hundred and twenty-five.
So what's your ask, uh, sorry, Zadia?
I'm curious about the golf and how that breaks down. Meaning, how how much? So what's the total cost, the total budget of the golf?
From department or division manager, so we'll bring up our parks and golf and open space division manager, Mr. Johnson.
Welcome.
David, thank you. My name's Johnson, Parks Development and Open Space Manager. If you repeat your question again, I would appreciate it.
Total budget for golf fun and how does it break down?
Not going to be exact, but roughly, um.
Help you?
Sure, if you got the exact number.
Page, page fifty-three in your budget documents is the golf fund. All of that's.
Glasses. Um, so are you asking for the operating budget?
Operating.
The the total budget of the golf fund for, we're proposing for 2024 is six point, well, just under six point three million dollars.
And how does that break down?
And how does that break down? Uh, the operating out of that is uh four point nine million dollars. Uh, debt service payment, eight hundred thousand dollars and capital plan, six hundred thousand dollars.
That four point nine operating, that mainly, is that personnel?
That's everything, that would be personnel, that's commodities, that's your contractor services, um, salaries, all of our, uh, yeah, benefits.
A majority of that is personnel, certainly, yeah, obviously.
The maintenance piece to maintain the courses. We have pretty pristine golf courses, I think probably the best, some of the best in the state. Um, is there room to have less in there, at least for one year, so that we can do some more of these other things? Isn't that enterprise?
Yeah, it's an enterprise, which we can't.
Well, and also. And don't we lose money every year on the golf? Don't we really subsidize it with general fund when you count in the capital improvement project?
It has a small subsidy from the Parks Open Space and Trails Fund to offset the debt service payments.
Uh, how much is that?
Million dollars.
One million from the general fund?
Parks Open Space and Trails Fund.
So what do you want to do with that one?
Oh, would you want to expand it to?
Creating the number of those who can. If, so so I think one of the emails you replied with to me was that it's, it's pretty much used, right? At its capacity.
So again, it's as needed. We don't have any income, um, actually verification. Uh, it is, if you come in and express that you're in need of some assistance, there's a one-page form that has to be filled out. And then you're offered that um a discount. Currently, it is set up and always has been that it's a fifty percent discount. Um, the the buddy program is where somebody gets in for free, but both the scholarship and the reduced rate is at fifty percent. So the individual covers fifty percent of the cost and then fifty percent of scholarship are discounted. So that's a current program, but we we don't limit per se how many people are able to take advantage of it. It just depends on what the use of this.
What's, can, I understand what actual, uh, what they're saving. So like it's fifty percent reduction, what's the actual rate that they pay in order to have an annual pass or a full-time pass?